The Missouri House Committee on Public Policy will come to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Chair Cups.
Present.
Vice Chair Bailey. Representative Sharp. Baker. Chipman. Ellabrock.
We do have a quorum. I would like to start off this afternoon by thanking everyone for coming out to be with us this afternoon. We're not going to belabor the point. I do want to mention Vice Chair Bailey is presenting a bill in another committee. She will be here as soon as possible, as well as Representative Kelly. And we're going to try to do our best to work through everyone as efficiently as possible. We are not going to be hearing, I know we were posted up for three bills, we will not be hearing House Bill 1666. We will be hearing House Bill 2502, Representative Houx, and House Bill 2556, Representative Christopher Nelli. Those bills are the same and we have chosen to hear them together today. With that, like I said, we are going to try to work through as efficiently as possible. When it comes time for testimony, we will alternate testimony. We will start with those in favor. We will then move to those that are opposed. And we will save anyone that's here for informational purposes only until the end. That's how we're going to do it this afternoon. So with that, Representative Houx, Representative Christopher Nelli, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the committee, Representative Dan Houx serves in the 54th District, Johnson Peas County. Today in front of we, we have House Bill 2502 and House Bill 2556. This is a coalition of the sports teams and casinos coming together to form this bill. A record three, 31 million Americans bet on the Super Bowl this past couple of weeks. It's a 35% increase over 2021, according to American Gaming Association. Bettors wagered an estimated $7.6 billion on the championship game, which is up from $3.3 billion. Missouri is one of only 18 states that currently does not have sports gambling. Thirty-three other states, including the District of Pass legislation. More importantly, the eight states surrounding Missouri, five have passed legislation and two of them, Kansas and Oklahoma, currently have legislation working through their process. This bill once again is a coalition of the Missouri professional sports team and five of the six casinos. This bill is more than a sports book, it's a revenue generator. And with that, I'll turn it over to Representative Christopher Nelli.
Thank you, members of the committee. Phil Christopher Nelli from the 105th District. I am happy to be here today with my colleague, Representative Houx, to present you this legislation, which has been a long time coming. It is a compromise bill between many of the stakeholders in the sports betting arena. I think many of you know and are aware of the fact that sports betting is occurring with impunity across the state of Missouri. It happens largely on unlicensed and unregulated apps. And there are over 30 states, as the representative said, that have legalized sports betting and allowed a framework for consumer protection and an avenue for revenue generation for the state of Missouri to address our critical needs like education and many others. I think this bill does this. It brings all the stakeholders to the table and provides an accountable and efficient system for allowing Missourians to play sports wagers, which I will remind you, they wish to do in record opinion numbers, well over 75, 80% across the state. And so I think this is one of the most positive things that we can do this legislative session. A lot of people want to see it, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the details. We will also have a number of expert witnesses from the field that would be able to drill down on the fine-tune elements of this bill. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from the committee for the bill sponsors? I do know we have a lot of folks that are going to be providing testimony this afternoon, and I assume there's going to be quite a few questions for them. But for the bill sponsors, seeing none, Representative Baker, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Representative Christopher Nelli, just a couple of questions. Appreciate the bill. I've learned a lot, actually, about this issue, which typically do not really care about because I don't personally gamble. But here we are. So the thing that I'm really interested in is the problem gambling portion of the bill. So what is actually written in the bill on that issue? And then what is left to the commission to come up with rules and regs on when it comes to that? And I know this is several questions in one. But are they going to kind of go with what is currently in place for other gambling when it comes to the rules and regs? What do you foresee in that?
Sure. There's a few protections in there. One, there's a portion of the money that I believe will be dedicated to address problem gambling. There's also going to be a self-exclusion program so that problem gamblers can ensure that they're not allowed access to the gaming apps. There's going to be advertising requirements that include gambling helplines, which I think have been proven to be effective in deterring problem gamblers from accessing the services. And I also think that another thing to keep in mind with all these is the point that I stressed earlier, which is that sports gambling is occurring right now, as we speak, across the state of Missouri. And there are none of these protections that are accompanying that type of activity. I think that it's better if we bring this activity into the light, provide a regulatory framework around it, and address the problem gamblers where they may arise.
Thank you. And, you know, I understand that. I do, you know, I go back and forth because it is something that I think is already happening. That's a given. But trying to find a line there of what we do with this, I think, is a clincher for me. So that was the main thing, is trying to understand a little bit what the bill speaks to. Now, what amount of money, is it 250,000 that goes to the problem gambling? Is there?
Yes.
So what do they do with that money?
I think we'll have people from the Gaming Commission that could testify at some point that could probably go into more details. But I believe that there are a number of intervention programs.
Okay. And I can probably ask them the other questions on it. Thank you, Representative, I appreciate it.
Are there any further questions of the committee for the bill sponsors? Seeing none, thank you, gentlemen. We are going to now move to testimony. As I stated, we will start with testimony in favor of the proposed legislation. So whoever wants to start, please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, with the amount of testimony, if I can step over each time, the people who are for this and tell you who to call up or have them come up, might make it a little easier for you.
Yeah, I will allow it. If you've visited with some of them and have a bit of a framework, I will allow that this afternoon.
Perfect. I'd like you to have Mr. DeWitt come up, Mr. George, and Mr. Winter. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm being told to remind everyone to make sure that you have a witness form filled out. If you have already done so online, we understand. But please make sure that you have, in either format, filled out a witness form and left it with us today. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, I'm Bill DeWitt III, President of the St. Louis Cardinals. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today about sports wagering legislation in Missouri. I speak on behalf of the Missouri Pro-Sports Team Coalition, which is a group made up of the six major pro-sports teams here in Missouri. Cardinals, the Blues, and the new St. Louis City Soccer Club in St. Louis. And the Chiefs, Royals, and Casey Current, Women's Pro-Soccer Team in Kansas City. And as you'll soon hear from the casinos and the mobile operators, we've all gotten on the same page, along with the mobile operators, casinos, et cetera, who are all kind of the key stakeholders here. And I believe it's a fair compromise for all involved. First and foremost, all the pro-sports teams in Missouri support sports wagering as a way to increase engagement with our fans and provide a fun and exciting new way to enjoy sports and root for our teams, which are such ingrained members of our communities. We also know that sports wagering will generate a significant new source of tax revenue for Missouri, whereas now, as Rep. Christopher Nelli said, we currently, you know, just have illegal operators performing outside the bounds of regulation and, of course, not paying tax. As my 20-year-old sophomore son remarked as I was coming today, "Dad, why are you doing that? It's already legal in Missouri. My friends all have these apps." And I said, "Well, delete your app. It's not legal yet." But legalization is one thing, but we also want to make sure that any such legislation would result in a safe and responsible experience for those choosing to wager on our games, while also protecting the family-friendly environments in and around our facilities for those who would choose not to participate in this new activity. Before I get into the specifics, I thought it would be helpful to sort of see how we got to this point. In spring of 2018, the Supreme Court overturned PASPA, which is the Professional and Amateur Sports Protection Act, which opened the door for any state to legalize sports wagering if it wanted to. And so during those four ensuing years, 32 states have legalized some form of sports wagering and more to come. I should also note that it's currently legal in almost all of our bordering states, including Illinois, Arkansas, Tennessee, Iowa, Nebraska, Oklahoma, with Kansas likely to approve it this year. But in Missouri, we have seen three legislative sessions come and go since that ruling and three failed attempts to get something passed. Typically, what's happened in the legislature here is that sports wager legislation has been combined with VLT legislation, which is Video Lottery Terminals, Slot Machines, aka. And our friends at the casinos feel very strongly that any form of VLT expansion would harm their business, and they and others have worked to kill those combined bills in previous sessions. And there have been other reasons, of course, but we felt that by getting together with them and working on not just sports wagering, but, you know, several related issues, and to have this legislation stand on its own with VLT debated on a separate track, we feel that we have the best chance of getting something done this year. We also had to work through a number of issues on the sports betting side that would establish how our industries handled this new bill after legalization. And I'll go through them real quick. There's five. We agreed on collectively an approach to licensing, which would grant the casinos licenses and the teams would each get one. But the team license would not include the right to put a retail sports book in its facility or surrounding area. Two, we agreed that each team would be able to draw a 400-yard radius around its facility, within which would be a clean zone for marketing purposes. And the purpose of this is to allow the teams to prohibit the kind of obnoxious and ambush marketing that could otherwise occur as our fans enter our stadiums and arenas with their families. And I want to emphasize that these sports districts would not prohibit fans from using their mobile devices to place bets on approved sports betting apps. It's really just designed to allow the teams to control the messaging that's going to our fans as they enter and leave our facilities. Three, we agreed with the casinos and the mobile operators that the bill should require any sports wagering operator to use official league data from the leagues. And this is a very important issue to the teams because we want to make sure that if fans are betting on our games, we can control the accuracy and timing of data so that some unauthorized data sources can't gain the system. They could be quicker or slower by a half second, creating a temptation to cheat or have small timing arbitrage happen. And since the casinos or mobile operators are being asked to use our data, we've agreed that the fees we would charge them for this must be on commercially reasonable terms so that nobody has to pay a monopoly pricing for the information. Four, there's strong language in the bill requiring cooperation by the leagues, teams, and mobile operators to cooperate with law enforcement agencies to ensure that any suspected illegal activity is dealt with in a swift and efficient manner. It goes without saying that there must be integrity in the system for everybody, and we need to minimize the temptation for anyone involved in our games, whether they be players, coaches, or front office workers, or others, to cheat in that system. And five, we all agree there needs to be a fair tax rate. We've suggested 10% in the bill, which is kind of in the middle of what we're seeing out there in other states. We want to make sure that there's no temptation for fans to go to other lower-tax states for better pricing, or otherwise have taxes choke the economics of the operators who we need to be successful to create a robust set of choices for Missouri consumers. In conclusion, the Cardinals and our friends at the other teams strongly support this legislation. We're excited about what this means for our fans who've been asking us to help get this done. But we must do this while protecting the integrity of our games, which is a sacred trust that we have with our fans. And we look forward to working with you, as well as all interested stakeholders in this new industry, to fine-tune this legislation that would be great for our fans and all the citizens of Missouri. Thank you.
Thank you. I know it's somewhat arbitrary, but you mentioned that the states that border us where sports wagering is legal, and you mentioned that it's legal in Oklahoma. I was under the impression, from some research that I've done, that it is not legal in Oklahoma. And so I was curious.
I could be wrong. I grabbed that off the Internet last night. So we all know that the Internet, but do you know, Mike, if it's legal or not?
From my understanding, that was legalized in 2020, but then withdrawn. And so no sports wagering is legal in the state of Oklahoma by even the tribal casinos at the current time. That is what I understood from research. That's why I was hoping someone could add clarification. We have a couple of members of this committee, including myself, that are from southwest Missouri. And naturally, one of the reasons that we're interested in this is we do see a lot of revenue leave the state on a daily basis, going to the state of Oklahoma where they have Indian gaming. And so...
We definitely see it in St. Louis as our fans cross the river.
Yeah. And so that was, like I said, in my research, I was under the impression that it was not currently legal there. And so we may be able to get some clarification off that offline. With that, I'm going to open it up to the committee for questions of this witness. Vice Chair Bailey, please proceed.
I said you could go ahead and start, but I'll take it. Fine, that's fine. I was just getting acclimated. Good afternoon, sorry, I was a little late, had another hearing. So you don't have to be accurate, of course. But the first year, how much do you expect that will be bet on sports casinos and through the Internet?
Representative Bailey?
Yeah, but yes and no.
And so maybe Todd George is Executive VP of Operations at Penn National Gaming next to me, and then Mike Winter represents the Missouri Casinos here. I'm looking at both of them for help on this one.
If you look at the fiscal note, you know, that's going to have the estimates that are provided. I'm sorry, I'm Mike Winter, I represent the Missouri Gaming Association. And before I start, just let me say, as it was mentioned, five of the six casinos in Missouri are supportive of this. All six are members of my organization, but today I'm representing just five of those. The fiscal note does provide a projection of revenue to the state. I will say that there is a provision in the bill which does need to be amended because typically in casino revenue or sports wagering, there is a deduction for the cash payout to patrons. So that provision was inadvertently not included in 2502 and 2556. So that will have an impact on the tax, a fairly substantial impact on the tax revenue, which probably brings it more in line with the 15 to 20 million revenue estimate to the state based upon what's wagered. But I think it's going to take some period of time, once sports betting gets legalized in Missouri, to ramp up. It's just not going to happen overnight to where it just shoots through the roof to the maximum number that we anticipate. It's going to take, I think, a fairly substantial marketing effort on behalf of the operators and the platforms to attract that business out of the illegal markets where it's been for years now. And I think, so I think you'll see a gradual increase, depending upon how much revenue and promotion money is pushed out to try to attract those patrons to a legal sports betting platform rather than placing those bets illegally.
So I think it was 2019, Representative Plucker had a similar bill, and in his bill, the tax paid was 12%. So, and I know the standard, I guess the standard is Nevada, but sort of, but not really, but they're the casino kings out there, is 6.75. So how, I mean, is 10 arbitrary, or is it just trying to make everyone happy?
Well, when we've testified in support of other gaming bills in the past, 6.75 was one that we had supported. But I think in the conversations between the teams and most of the casinos, they arrived at a 10% number to ask you all to consider. And when you look around at surrounding states, I believe Iowa is 6.75, Illinois is 15, some of the others are below 10. But if you look at the range, it's from 6.75 to 51%. And I will tell you that a 51% tax rate is probably not realistic to, if your goal is to see substantial build-out and push from operators in trying to attract that business. So we're trying to get to a place where there's a reasonable tax rate, and, you know, that's up for your all's discussion as you move forward with the bill on exactly what that rate can be.
Just for fun, let me place a wager now. Maybe we can close the deal right now. Let's take it to 13% tax rate, and then we change in statute where it's the $2 admission fee, raise it to three, and put that on an inflation schedule, and we can all go home. Any takers?
I don't think so, not on this side of the table.
Okay. All right, well, just so you know, I joke about that, but the admission fee we'll talk about later. But the tax, the tax piece, you know, is touchy, obviously, because us as brokers of the state, you know, coming in here in the last minute, skidding into home base, no pun intended, sir, but, you know, we kind of get this pushed on us. And so, you know, we're looking to make the best deal for the state as possible. Illinois doing 15% is curious to me. So we'll talk about that at a later time, maybe today. So do you want to talk about adjusted gross receipts, or now or later?
It's up to you, Representative.
For fun, how much would the adjusted gross receipts today be generated under the present definition of the AGR?
I have not seen a solid projection, other than, you know, we tend to use the fiscal notes for guidance and some of that, so I think I'd probably look at the number that they base their fiscal note estimate on.
Okay. And for the crowd here, can you tell me the difference between the present definition and the new definition in the bill, and the reason for it?
You're asking about the current definition of AGR for casino revenue? The differences between the casino AGR definition and what's contained in this piece of legislation is the deductibility for, if you're looking at the free player promotional credits. Currently, casino revenue does not have that deduction.
And is that a big sticking piece for you? And if so, why?
Well, again, I think we're trying to incentivize patrons to come to the legalized sports betting market. And I think it makes sense to provide some incentive for promotional play to be sent out to potential patrons to get them into the legal market. You know, Missouri's not unusual in considering promotional play as a deduction. A number of other states have done so prior to this bill being filed.
Oh, which ones, do you know?
There are eight of them, and I can get you the list. But they range. Some are full deductibility, such as what's suggested in 2502, and that's Colorado and two other states. And then there are subtle differences in the other five states on exactly the ability to deduct promotional play.
So I guess the heartburn with that is, for the state, you know, the large projection on the fiscal note as compared to what it realistically may be, is quite a difference. So roughly $5, $10 million could come into the state a year, depending on how much you want to write off on the promotional piece. So again, being the good broker for the state, it just, you know, I would counteroffer that. I know this isn't the negotiation at the moment, but I think these pieces, you know, again, we're a Republican supermajority, and I don't have anything against sports wagering, be my guest. But I will say, I have friends who are like, "Oh, I have to go," and they go over to Illinois to vote, or to vote too. Well, that would be interesting. And you know what? Illinois probably really likes that, so, yeah. Pretzger loves it. But, and I see the problem in, you know, like the chairman said, we don't want the money leaving the state. However, for this to be not a boon, but not a boondoggle for the state, I guess we have to be incentivized to do it as well. And so we'll continue to talk about these small but large issues. And I know you got together, and it took moving heaven and earth and a few mountains to even get to this point amongst yourselves, and I understand that, as you kind of chuckle, and I can imagine. And so we're the last cog in the wheel, but it's quite a process. But for right now, I'll close, Mr. Speaker. Or, yeah, and I'm all over the place. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bailey. I actually have just a couple of quick follow-up questions to that. Can we start off, can both you gentlemen please restate your names and your titles for the committee?
Sure. Thank you. My name is Todd George. I'm the Executive Vice President of Operations for Penn National. We own three casinos in Missouri. We own Argosie Riverside, Hollywood Casino in Maryland Heights, and River City Casino in South St. Louis.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm Mike Winter. I'm a registered lobbyist on behalf of the Missouri Gaming Association.
Okay. Thank you. Do you all have any actuarial data, to Vice Chair Bailey's point, concerning what percentage of revenues might be? And I understand this could be different, depending on the platform and who had the particular license, skin, whatever you want to call it. But what percentage of that would be utilized in the early stages, in the mid-stages, towards the maturity of the development of one of these platforms? And with that, potentially, the revenue that could fluctuate there? You know, I've been asked by people in this building, by people in my district, my constituents, who historically, like Representative Baker pointed out, have been, you know, I don't gamble, we're not historically an area that has been on gambling, but people do understand that it's happening illegally. That's something that we want to be real about here today. And with that, they just are curious as to what the value is to legalize this, not only for the state, but for the constituents, all the constituents of the state of Missouri. I didn't know if you had any data from other states that allowed this type of promotion? You know, mentioned Colorado was one of the states that had full deductibility of the promotion piece. Are they also in the 10% range, or do they have a higher, do they have a higher tax rate to go along with that? Like, what kind of data are we seeing off that?
So there, at this time, there doesn't appear to be a correlation between the tax deductibility versus the tax rate. I can tell you, and I actually worked in this market, so neighboring states and deductibility of promo credits. So promo credits are free play. It's the casino money that they give to others to come in. So taxing it is being taxed on your own money. So in Indiana, competing against Ohio, Ohio does not have taxability on promotional play, Indiana does. So what you typically see is Ohio revenues tend to outpace Indiana border revenues because Ohio can be more aggressive with their offerings. What Indiana has done is they've kind of stair-stepped up and said, "All right, you can deduct up to $2.5 million." And then that went from $2.5 to $5 million to kind of right the ship and create a level playing field. Other states, last week, there was an article about the launch of sports betting in New York. So really what you're seeing, and why it's hard to find that baseline, is that as games... So, really, what you're seeing, and why it's hard to find that baseline, is that as gaming has expanded across the U.S., so the year-over-year comparisons, the growth from year-over-year comparisons, it's hard because your baseline was so low, and now you have 12 new states in there. So, as more data comes out, we're happy to share that with everyone. Oh, and also, just one follow-up. So, your question on Oklahoma, it is going through negotiation now from a compact negotiation between the governor and the tribes there. And then, there was a question on, you know, the tax rate and kind of the nature of how 10% was derived. So, you do, you have Illinois at 15%, but you do have Iowa, and I believe it's around 7%, 6.75 to 7.25. And right now, the way Kansas is progressing, it's looking like it'll be 9 to 9.25. So, it's kind of in the middle realm there.
Okay, thank you. Actually, the one other question I had, and I'm going to go ahead and ask it now concerning that subject, was, concerning the subject of Oklahoma, was, I do know that there are a number of casino organizations, tribes, however they may be structured, in Oklahoma that are members of the Missouri Gaming Association, or what, I am under the impression that they are part of some professional organizations within the state, simply because they do employ so many people from the state of Missouri, and many of the people that visit them are from the state of Missouri. Naturally, the reason they're located there is because, in the past, that's the way that it had to be done for them to structure their businesses the way they did. But were they included in these conversations at all? And is, if you look at some of these corners of the state, were any of those people that do employ a lot of Missourians that may even have separate business entities within the state of Missouri, were they allowed a seat at the table? Or is that something that they potentially could, in the future, become involved? Or if we do this now without their involvement, does that mean they're shut out forever?
Well, let me kind of give you an idea of who belongs to my organization and where they're situated. There are 13 licensed properties owned by six different companies. Penn National owns three properties. Boyd Gaming has two, St. Charles and Kansas City. Affinity Gaming is in St. Joseph, Missouri, and La Grange. Century Casino is Cape Girardeau and Carruthersville. And then the six would be Bally's, which owns Casino KC. So, all of our 13 members have to be on either the Missouri or Mississippi River. So, that would have been the group that would have had the conversations with Mr. DeWitt and the other professional teams.
Okay, so, those are, that was the only, the only parties, if you will, that were part of those negotiations?
Well, they represent the only casinos operating in Missouri. So, yeah, that would be the parties that were engaged.
And we didn't talk to any operators in any other states? Okay, okay. I'm going to, I don't want to take the committee's time, but I understand, I was unaware of a lot of this, but I understand there's a proposed casino in Lake of the Ozarks that would be owned tribally. Is that something that you can enlighten us a little bit about? And if that were to come to fruition, would they have any sort of opportunities? Or is that something that, on, at face value?
There are two different things being proposed for Lake of the Ozarks. One is from the Osage Tribe. They're trying to get land designated and put into trust for a casino at the lake. And then, there's a separate group of businesspeople in the lake who have also expressed an interest in prior years about trying to amend the constitution to include the Osage River and a 14th license. So, that's kind of what you have going on at Lake of the Ozarks. Different dynamic, obviously, trying to go through the compact and the native side versus trying to amend the constitution to include the Osage River.
The Osage Tribe is the party that I was, from my understanding, they're, I guess they're kind of making some headway, for lack of a better way to describe it. But is that something that they would be excluded in an involvement of this in the current bill's format, or is there opportunity for expansion if something like that were to come to fruition? What's that look like?
Well, Todd can probably talk a little bit better about how they're regulated, but keep in mind, they are treated as sovereign entities, which are not under any state regulation or control. So, no tax revenue, nothing along those lines, nor would Missouri be able to regulate them, is my understanding. They would be regulated through a compact. Now, there may be a federal arm of regulation, but to the best of my knowledge, there's no state regulation.
That's correct. In states where there's both commercial casinos and Native American casinos, it's completely separate regulations and separate agreements, similar to what I mentioned about Oklahoma. That is done going through a negotiation that would impact that tribal casino. It's truly completely separate, so completely different set of rules and regulations.
So, with that, would they be, I'm just trying to work through this, would they be able to offer sports wagering without regulation by the state?
They would have to negotiate that as part of their compact with the governor. They would determine what games would be available, what amenities would be available, and approve by, approve through the compact.
Okay, I don't want to belabor that more today. I'm just, like I said, trying to work through some of this. So, with that, are there any further questions from the committee for these, Representative Chip, and you're recognized for an inquiry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Winter, I want to go back to the adjusted gross receipts a little bit, and just kind of go down the line. And really, what I gather from looking at the list of things that would be allowed to be taken out of the revenue stream is the same things that any other business gets to deduct whenever they're doing their income statement. Would that be pretty much correct?
I'd say that's a fair assessment of it, yes.
Because if the casino is giving you, or whatever entity is giving you money to gamble, and you're giving it right back, it's essentially negating the whole transaction. So, to say you're counting it as revenue when you gave it to them in the first place isn't really true. And to say it is revenue is, I think, defies anything the IRS would consider a definition of revenue, correct?
Yes, it inflates the revenue because it is truly your promotional dollars going into there, so it actually inflates the revenue. It's being taxed on your own money, again.
Yeah, I just wanted to point that out for the committee and for everybody else, that essentially, what that section of statute is doing is treating you just like any other business that gets to deduct promotional expenses.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Representative Baker, you're recognized for an inquiry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I have two main questions. One, whoever wants to answer is fine, and the other probably will be for Mr. Winter. But is it a fair assessment to say that a higher tax will hinder Missouri's ability to compete with other interests?
That is a fair assessment. So, and again, the range was given, and for full disclosure, I mean, the range actually is zero. It's the illegal gaming, as Mr. DeWitt mentioned, the apps that go to offshore, they pay zero taxes. Bookies, others pay zero taxes. So, the range we're competing against is zero, to neighboring states of up to 15%. So, having Kansas at nine and a quarter, having Oklahoma with wherever they come in, for Native American, it'll typically either be a flat fee, that could be a smaller percentage, or, you know, it typically would fall single-digit, but that would be up to the negotiation. And then, Iowa coming in at that 7%. So, when you are able to spend more in marketing, you're able to drive more in volumes and revenues. But really, the entire business of sports betting is meant to be, introduce a new audience or one more amenity, similar to all your food and beverage offerings, your hotel offerings, your entertainment offerings. So, being able to introduce people to this and then get them into a casino, that's where you can really create an entertainment experience. So, if you're able to do that more, you're able to keep money in Missouri as opposed to what, there was an article in the St. Louis Post-Dispatch about the number of people that went across the border into Illinois to make their Super Bowl wager.
So, and I get that part of it with the amenity. Is it, is the competing interest going to be more so the illegal bets, or is it going to be other states with a lower tax?
I think it's a combination, especially at this stage where Illinois has had sports wagering for a while now. They've been able to learn from it. On March 5, I believe, they changed the regulation slightly. They had an in-person registration for a long time. Now, it's going to be a remote registration, so they're learning how can, you know, they prove this to be effective. But you also have a large number of people that have been betting on sports for years. So, it is truly a combination.
So, a combination. What would be the maximum tax rate that would make Missouri's interests be competitive in that combination?
So, competing against zero to 15, we skewed higher at the 10. 10 in St. Louis is very helpful, we're competing against Illinois. 10 on the Kansas City side will be slightly higher than who we're competing against on the border states. But we thought, on average, that gives us a really good competitive landscape where we can have a level playing field.
So, as a composite of all those, you're saying 10% would be the maximum that would make it to be competitive?
So, 10%, we try to optimize where we can be competitive, how we can maximize revenues to the state and to the companies.
Okay, thank you for that. So, this is a question I have for Mr. Winter, because as I understand it, the Missouri Gaming Commission is what regulates the problem gambling fund, or handles that fund?
Yeah, under the current law, when you talk about admission fee revenue, up to one cent of the admission fee revenue can be appropriated through appropriations for problem gambling. And that was targeted really to help individuals who had gaming problems to get them free counseling visits. So, that was the early, that was the earmarked money that's currently there through the admission.
Okay, do you know what, I mean, just, I'm throwing this out there, what is the rate of problem gambling today?
Well, I think there are a couple of different definitions out there, but I think when we think of people that have serious gambling problems, it's in that 2% range, 2% to 3%, I believe is the number.
Do you expect, if this is enacted, do you expect with sports wagering, do you expect in internet sports and all that, do you expect it to increase the number of people who will become problem gamblers?
I don't know that we'll see a spike, but I think it is important for you all, as you work through this bill, to make sure there's adequate revenue in a piece of legislation to address those issues if they do arise.
And that's my concern, you know, is if, if there's an anticipated increase in the number of people, and there's more of a demand for that help, you know, do we have that figured into this? Is it going to meet the demand? And that's the question I'm trying to understand and get at.
Well, I think as the Representative Hux and Christopher Nelli pointed out, there's 250,000, I think, presently in the bill, so I would assume that would be a point that this committee would want to discuss to make sure that that's the right number you felt comfortable with.
Do we have any data that, you know, and I know this is relatively new, in the past few years, as far as even across the country, but do we have any data that really shows, that we can look at when it comes to the problem gambling over the past few years since this has been enacted?
Specific to sports wagering, I'm not aware of any, but I'll, I can look and provide that to the committee if there is any.
Just curious. I appreciate it, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Representative Kelly, you're recognized for an inquiry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up really quickly on that same line of questioning, gentlemen, thank you for being here. And in reference to the data, if we could also perhaps get from the Budget Office the lapse in funding on the current fund, this is the budget person and me talking, I guess, but if we could perhaps through the bill sponsors, get the data in regards to what money is there and what's been used statistically based on what we're receiving, that would be fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Bailey, you're recognized for an inquiry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, when you brought up the Indian casinos, it reminded me of a question. I understand those might be separate entities. And I've asked this question of several people in the room, I don't think I've really gotten a straight answer. Does this bill say it's passed, truly agreed, and finally passed presently as it stands, does it exclude any other casino, sports wagering, whomever, to come into Missouri and get a license and open up shop? That's not currently present within the negotiations that you all just had?
With the caveat that you would have to amend either the statute or constitution to increase the number of licenses, if that were to happen, then I think that they would probably fall under the bill to get sports betting licenses. And when you look at the definition of the entities that are defined under Designated Sports District, I think allowances are made for the NBA and the WNBA if there were teams that came with those major league governing bodies and fit the criteria for the 11,500 capacity within their stadiums, they would likely qualify as well.
So, there is a set number of licenses, though, as we speak?
As we speak now, there's 39, but it's relative to the 13 casinos and the six professional teams that are operating right now.
Okay, so, in the future, if XYZ sports team comes into town, not baseball, no worries, and they want to, would we have to, I'm just trying to make it clear, we would have to, and they want, and they fit the criteria, everybody's shipshape, we would have to amend the constitution, statute, correct?
For casinos.
For casinos, but not sports wagering.
Right, if you look at the definition on page five of Designated Sports District, that's where you find the capacity that's required within the facilities of the 11,500, and then it lists the professional teams who are members of certain governing bodies, NFL, Major League Baseball, hockey, NBA, the two soccer organizations, and the WNBA.
Hold on, I have three bills in my
Lines 41 to 45.
We're having an elementary meeting there. Okay, so, one other question, I was really intrigued by the $2 admission fee that was mistakenly put in the Constitution in 1994 and not being calculated for inflation. So, and I know they used to do it by head back then when they had the, not steam engine, but the riverboats, you know, they count the heads and then pay the state $2. $1 goes to your commission, $1 goes to the home cities, and a penny goes to the trust fund. Okay, so, and that hasn't been changed. So, $2 back then, right now, like $7 or what have you. And the overage that's collected, because now they just count heads and they pay, but the overage is left to the casinos, which, hey, I'm all great, I'm all good with that.
On admission fee revenue?
On admission fee revenue.
Let me back up a little bit. We pay a $2 admission fee per person, per two hours, for a part of the two-hour time which they're on our facilities. Half of it stays with the home doc community, half of it goes to the gaming commission, and I'm not the commission, I'm the association. And then, they will pay for what we're usually called worthy causes, whether it be veterans or education and things like that. So, that revenue is then split between those organizations. And as far as I know, and I've been in this building for over 30-some years, I'm not And as far as I know, and I've been in this building for over 30 some years, I've not seen inflationary increases that the legislature typically passes on fees. You tend to like to weigh in on that every once in a while rather than a built-in inflationary factor, so.
Okay. So just as I, I noticed in 2019, Senator Bernscoeter filed a bill to raise it to $3 to fund a museum or two, and it was pushed back pretty hard. It did not pass. So I guess I'm just wondering, you know, with this bill, I mean, it was 1994, you know, that things have changed, you know, inflation is there, especially in the double digits today, but that's neither here nor there. But for this purpose, it might be something we look at. I mean, again, to make us happier with it. And then also, so when you walk in a, a casino, I physically walk in and I go to lose, lose my money, it's a joke. I go in to lose my money and I'm charging admission fee because I'm physically there. Are you going to count the, how are you going to count the people that do it on their phone? They're going to make a, a sports wager. How are, how are you going to count them? And, and is it going to be an admission fee? And I, how are, how are you handling all that? Or how are you looking at it, I guess I should say?
Well, the casinos pay the admission fee for the patrons. Patrons don't pay anything.
Right. And I, I spoke, I know what you're saying. So are you paying then for the internet? Say, say I place a bet today on my phone, are you paying the $2 admission fee for me placing that bet on my phone?
There's no admission fee envisioned under sports betting. You know, you may have people that are on and off their apps multiple times a day. So I don't know what the thought would be if you would theoretically charge them a fee every time they went on their app. And I'm not, Mr. George may know different, but I'm not aware of any other gaming jurisdiction in the country that's dealt with sports betting that's considered any kind of a admission fee or other fee for accessing your app.
So, because my thought, I was looking at that statute yesterday was, yeah, it's outdated, you know, that was back in the riverboats and, and boats and moats day. So, you know, as updating that, even if we leave it at $2, putting that, you know, because instead of, how shall I say it, rear ends in the casino, it could, it's now a bet. So instead of be physically being there, if you place that bet, because I'm still interacting with that entity, and I mean, I guess as an attorney, you can argue that to your blue in the face if, if a bet is, is, you know, an admission to, to that. So a, again, as one other way, I was thinking that maybe we all could be made happy is if we change that statute as well, making that an interactive admission. Because I'm going through Harris Casino and I'm going to make that sports wager, let's go ahead and, and you guys pay the state the $2 and everybody's happier. It's a thought, you know, we, we move along with technology pretty quick and our statutes don't follow. So 1994 was, how many years ago? So it's, it's just something that isn't negotiable, or maybe, maybe it's just me. But I'm looking at all this, because right now, I mean, I'm just going to be honest with you, you know, if, if we're all going to take this vote, and it's a, it's a big deal, it's a big deal to people for and against it, and we all have to, we want it, make it profitable for the state. We don't just want to regulate everyone to high heavens and be like, oh, we're going to put $5 million in education. It's got to be a, a bigger, it's got to be more of a boon for the, for the state. So I'm looking at all different avenues and updating that might help make everyone happier. Were you going to say something?
I, I was.
Okay.
So just a, a few points, and I appreciate the creativity and understand what you're, the point that you're, you're trying to make. I, I would say though, that in the online space, the, the wagers that people are making at times can be a $5 parlay, $5 bet on three different teams, $10 parlay.
We could hear it.
Yep.
We could hear it.
But if you start thinking about a $2 or a $3 admission fee to admit yourself to an app, that becomes an effective 50% tax rate.
And I get that. And this is where you, we would think through it. It would be something, you know, only if you win and, and you go to collect your winnings or whatever. Obviously, if you're making a $5 bet and the state takes two of it, that's a horrible deal. So, you know, we could do a percentage of, but I'm just saying, let's update the, the statute accordingly with technology. State gets paid, because again, you know, there's illegal betters out there, the gray machines, are we all that worried? I don't lose sleep over it, you know, I just don't. And so to kind of make it something that would appeal to us, it's got to be more than, than, you know, kind of what we're seeing. So it's all negotiable and yeah, I, I don't want to cut the profits. I want everybody to be profitable. So this is kind of where I am on that one. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bailey. I have a couple of quick things. Along with that line of questioning, through my research, I was under the impression that the state of New Jersey did have some sort of a, a fee per user on, on an app platform. And I, I, I have no knowledge as to the structure of that, but is, is there, are you aware of that? And i- is that something that you have involvement in or know the, the structure there?
We, we do not have a physical property in New Jersey. We can follow up and, and gather that information.
Okay. Yeah, I'd, I'd be interested, just out of curiosity more than anything right now as to how that's structured and if it's, if it's working for them, if it's not working for them, what the situation is there. I, I'm going to regress a second and then I'm going to try to speed things up a little bit. This is, this may be a, a question for Mr. DeWitt, actually. He's been sitting there pretty quiet. I was at the coffee shop in my hometown this morning, 5:30 this morning after feeding some cows in the mud, and I mentioned that I had to come here and do two things, file for reelection and hear, hear some sports wagering bills. And we, that led to a discussion where the whole entire group that was sitting there, they wanted to know how that worked. They, they like, there's, I know that we have a huge percentage of people in the state of Missouri that are currently doing this on some sort of illegal platform, but we also have a, as big a percentage of Missourians that have absolutely no clue how this works. I know that Mr. George said that during the Super Bowl, we had a lot of people that went over to the Illinois side to place their bet on the Super Bowl. It, it's from my understanding that they didn't actually physically go over there probably. I mean, I, I'm, like I've told other people, I was born in the dark and the rain, but it wasn't last night. You know, I'm assuming these people like aren't going to a little kiosk and, and placing a, a wager. It's, it's pretty well 99.5% mobile on their, on their phone. And so how does that work? Is it just that the, the entity that they're placing that bet with is in Illinois and so therefore we say that they're placing it in Illinois? Enlighten us a little bit as to that. And then i- if, if someone in Shell Mob USA that's never placed a sports bet before, if this becomes legal and they download one of these apps or they're given some of this promotional play, like what, what's the process there? And who gets the, I'm assuming the other party gets a percentage of that? Please be very elementary for those people that don't know how any of this works. And then after we work through that, we'll try to speed things up a bit, so.
Well, I, and these guys can correct me on it, but my understanding is you would download the app on your phone. And if you were in a state that was illegal, like it is now here, you're geofenced out of conducting the bet. So in Missouri, the app knows you're sitting in Missouri and so it says, sorry, you can't play. If you cross the river into Illinois on that app, it'll say, okay, you know, get your credit card, place a bet, here we go. If you then go back into Missouri, can't collect your winnings and things like that. Am I correct?
That is, that is absolutely correct. So the geo-tracking, typically when you download an app, it'll ask you, track while I'm using the app, don't track at all or track all the time. So at a minimum, you have to track while using the app. So anytime you make a wager, it knows where you're trying to make that wager from. And if it deems that you're in, and this is certified, it deems that you're in a place where it's legal to make that wager, you're allowed to make the wager.
And when we start talking about the, the scans or the licenses that the teams and/or the, the casinos have in, in, you know, at face value, the way that the bill is written, those entities would each have the ability to either have an app. This is, one of the biggest questions I had was Mr. DeWitt, it, the Cardinals, for example, is that something that, from my understanding, there's probably a high probability that you all would not be the one that facilitated the orchestration, but you would probably lease that? Sell it, lease it, give, give me an idea how that normally works within that space?
Sure. Well, from the Cardinal point of view, we, we can't actually run the sports book ourselves. That would be against our league rules. So we would partner with somebody like a mobile operator, you'll, you'll hear from them later, who might come in and say, oh, Cardinals, we'll use your license, sort of rent it from you, work with you on maybe some promotional stuff, and we'll use your license to come into the Missouri market. And they would be able to operate throughout Missouri if that were the case.
And the, anyone in Missouri then could operate with any one of, it, it's not regional. And so that's where it becomes that fairly advantageous to promote your app and your platform over, say, maybe one of the casinos.
Yeah, the casinos have partnerships with some mobile operators and so there's a whole ecosystem of sports betting companies that would look to come into Missouri. They would need to partner up with somebody who has a license, which would be the, either a casino or a team.
Thank you. Are there any more questions of Representative Sharp? You are recognized for an inquiry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A quick question. So I'm going back to the sports district and the prohibiting signage or commercial activity in that 400 yards. I'm just trying to figure out exactly what we're trying to do there. Are we trying to make it to where we can't have any commercial signage or are we still, we're still allowing for that, for that designated sports district to still approve commercial activity? I'm just trying to figure out what, what our highway is and our streets could look like if this is passed and how much, how much signage are we actually going to see? And, and I know we're trying to drive participation in this, but just what exactly could that look like?
The only thing that the sports district does is really just kind of give the team in an immediate, small surrounding around its building, the right to choose its partners from a marketing point of view. It doesn't geolocate anybody or geofence anybody out of that zone from an operations standpoint, from a betting standpoint. It just allows us, for example, to control the messaging as our fans come into the ballpark and they don't get hit up by the, you know, Jimmy the Greek's betting line guy or the this or the that, or, you know, barraging our, our family entertainment patrons with sports betting information. We really just want to control the way that, that is done so that we can target the fans that we think might be open to this and not target those who we don't think will be interested in this. Just gives the teams a little bit of control over the way the marketing occurs in their immediate surroundings.
Are, are you done representing? I, I'm assuming that that doesn't limit, from the way I read it, that doesn't limit your ability to market to the sun and back with the particular partner that you have partnered with, correct?
That's right. And you'll see the teams partner up with, with operators and promote, promote the product for sure.
Okay. Vice Chair Bailey?
Real quick, I think what everybody's trying to say is we don't want to look like Illinois. Am I wrong?
Like.
And I'd be careful when you go over to Illinois to vote, you might, we might get a bill.
When you go to vote.
If the geofence picks it up, we'll get a bill in the mail.
That, that is a concern and, and I'm, I'm not going to discuss that too, too much at length here, but I was driving through Indiana with, with some friends of mine a couple of weeks ago and like it, it was, we were bombarded so much by sportsbook billboards and signs and it, it, like everywhere we went and everything we did, all it was was sportsbook ads. And so much so that it became a, a conversation as we were riding together, like, oh my gosh, like I'm tired of seeing this stuff. And so I can't help but think that that's a, a discussion that we need to have when we're working through this, because I know there's a lot of people that maybe don't want their entire existence to be bombarded by sportsbook advertisement and promotion.
Without too much editorial here, just, I, I think what you'll see likely is, look, a rush for market share early on. I mean, I think that's what's happening and then it'll kind of stabilize and like you see with casinos, I mean, early on, I remember just the barrage of ads, like you said, and then it, sort of the dust settles, the market plays out and then it kind of equilibrium occurs.
That has been the trend across the U.S. Just a couple of other minor comments on that. Driving through Indiana, you know, Jamie Foxx is everywhere. And in Illinois, my favorite billboards up there are from Indiana saying you should come live in Indiana. So I, I think it's, it, it, those, those get out there, there's a race to kind of gather a database and, and then it scales back because people eventually need to make money.
Are there any further questions of these witnesses? Saying none, we now are going to move to testimony in opposition of the proposed legislation. And Representative Hux, do you have these gentlemen in a, in a list or?
I don't have a list.
Okay. So please, please proceed as you see fit.
Let me push the button. Thank you, Chairman Cups. I'm Ryan Saltz. I work for Boyd Gaming Corporation. We own and operate the two Ameristar properties here in Missouri. We are the one of Mike's five members that aren't in support of 2502 or 2556. I think it'd be fair, in the interest of time, just to give you a brief rundown of our company and our experience with sports wagering, and then I'll get into the details of our primary issue with the bill. So our company's been around for a long time. We've been around since 1975. Most people in this room probably weren't around in 1975, but we've been around for a while. And we've grown as gaming has been adopted throughout the country. Nevada-based company, as gaming came to places like Indiana, Illinois, Mississippi, Missouri, we've grown out here. So we have 28 properties in 10 states. But while we've been in the gaming business for a while, we've also been doing sports wagering for quite some time, too. We've operated sportsbooks in Nevada for nearly five decades. Today, our 11 properties in Nevada have sportsbooks and through our partnership with FanDuel, it'll be clear about that, we do have a relationship with FanDuel. We have operated 13 books, opened 13 books in six states since PASPA's repeal. In fact, we just opened five within the last few weeks down in Louisiana. Our experience isn't limited, though, just to the brick and mortar side. We operate our own sports wagering app today in Nevada, Boyd Sports. And through our licenses, our partners at FanDuel have launched mobile sports wagering apps in states like Indiana, Iowa, Illinois, Louisiana and Pennsylvania. You have a lot of, a lot of policy issues you have to decide. I mean, it's pretty apparent that you folks have done your homework. There's 34 states that have passed sports betting. I know some folks probably regret that Missouri wasn't a first mover. You'll probably hear that from some of your constituents, but at least you get to look and see what the landscape is in states that have adopted sports betting. You can see what's worked and what hasn't. I'll tell you, a robust mobile marketplace is important. It's very important. There is a lot of illicit activity that takes place today. You can go and look, media, they inadvertently will tell you and report lines from my bookie AG. That's an, that's a Costa Rican sportsbook. There's just a lack of awareness regarding the legal regulated market and the illegal, unregulated market. Our primary issue with the bill comes down to one piece of, of the bill. It comes down to official league data mandates. Chairman Cups, you've done your homework and I hope my numbers match yours, but from my own research, I'm, I'm only aware of five of 34 states that have legislatively mandated an official league data requirement. There are another two that have done, done so through rulemaking. So it's seven out of 34. You know, Mr. DeWitt was up here, I, I think as a baseball fan, I hope he enjoys this, but that's barely above the Mendoza line. It's 206. It's 206. So as you, as you consider these policies, I think it's important to look and see what has worked in other jurisdictions and what has not. I can tell you, I understand why the leagues want to require official league data. It's a revenue source for them. But the flip side is, is that with a strong regulatory environment, regulators aren't going to allow sportsbooks to just go to Billy Bob's sports data provider to run their book. You want, you want to have a robust array of data feeds that come in so you can see discrepancies when you set those lines, when you adjust the odds, when you settle wagers. If you see a discrepancy that happens from one data feed, but another three or four consistent, then you know there's an outlier. But if you start to see a lot of egregious errors, then that should root out suspicion of improper activity. If there's only one data source, it's corruptible. I think you all enjoy having different sources of information. I think most people do. Sports betting is no different. And I'll tell you, if there's any issue in terms of the data that our book would use, regulator sitting over my shoulder is going to make sure that we operate something that's on the up and up. The other side of it is if consumer feels that it's not on the up and up, they're going to move with their feet and their thumbs to my competitor's sportsbooks or to their apps. So in the interest of time, I wanted to keep my comments relatively brief to that. I want to be clear, I really represent, appreciate Representative House's work on this. He has done a yeoman's job in trying to pull some very diverse stakeholders together. We've had conversations about this issue and we've agreed to disagree on the issue of, of official league data. But I, I applaud your efforts, sir. I really do, because I've done this for a long time in a number of states and I know that our industry at times has disagreements, but when you get more stakeholders in, it's very hard to, to deal with those issues. And, and Vice Chair Bailey, I made some notes, just, and Representative Cups, you, you talked about Indiana, where I live. And, and my friends that were up here earlier were correct. So you're going to see a highly promotional environment when sports wagering comes online. I'm not going to, you know, be bashful about that. And when you look at that promotional environment, it is going to include things like a lot of billboard signage, a lot of television advertisement, a lot of radio ads. I'm just, I'm being very, very transparent here. Representative Baker, to your question about the helpline, that helpline number will be advertised on those, in that various, those various forms of media. So there will be an uptick in calls to the helpline, even if people aren't using the apps, because they're going to be more aware of the problem gambling helpline. In terms of revenue, I, I think that what you probably should look at is a couple of different states. And unfortunately for Missouri, there aren't quite the number of states that are of similar size as, as Missouri that have legalized it, but there are two that come to mind immediately. One is Indiana, where I'm from. Indiana has, you know, similar setup. I think we have 14 casinos and three mobile apps per casino. We're somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 to 18 that have gone live. It's a market that takes time to ramp up. There's new entrants that come in over time. But since sports betting launched in August of 2019, I can tell you what the state's tax revenue is. It was about $49 million to date. So that's from August of 2019, understanding that we had a pandemic that reduced the amount of sports wagering that was happening because there was, frankly, weren't contest. But 49 and a half million, and that's with a 9.5% tax rate on win and not the same level of deductions that's outlined in the Missouri bill. Six and a, 6.8 million people live in Indiana, I think Missouri, 6.2. Colorado, which is probably the next closest, at 5.8 million people, launched in May of 2020, 10% tax rate. And I, I think I heard Mike say that the definitions are very similar in what can be deducted there. So far to date, they have about, done about 15 million in, in tax revenue. Now, and again, in the early innings, to try to move people from the illegal market to the legal regulated one, you are going to have a lot of promotional activity. You're going to have activities such as for the big game, I don't want to offend the NFL, but for the big game, a few weeks ago, you had special 56 to one odds on either side of a bet to try to get people to sign up for the app. I don't know if you saw one of those billboards, Chairman Cups. You're, you also will see a mad dash when, pre-launch, just before everything goes live, of, you know, make a deposit and we'll match up to X amount. And I think you're seeing a lot of that today in New York. I know we're certainly seeing a lot of it in Louisiana, where we just saw sports betting go live. Just, I want this body to be aware that, that, that will happen. I want, I want to be transparent. I don't want you to think that, you know, we weren't, you know, honest with you if you decide to go down that path. Given the time, I really, that's the end of my comments. Be happy answering questions anyone may have.
Thank you for your testimony. I find it somewhat ironic, the two states that I found the most comparisons with in my research were Indiana and Colorado. And so that's, that 15 million, that's, would you, it came online in 2020, I, I, I mean, in your opinion, that's still in infancy, correct? I mean, would you, and you can speculate all you want, we're not going to hold you to anything, but what would you expect that to be, say, in four years?
You know, it's a little difficult for me to judge. I think that we're still, no pun intended, you know, in the early innings of this endeavor. You know, you're, you had several states that were first movers back in 2018, 2019, New Jersey, obviously, being at the forefront, probably the most mature, certainly the most mature mobile sports wagering market. And I say that even though we were domiciled in Nevada and there's been sports betting there for years. But when you look at the promotional activity and you kind of look at some of the different apps that are trying to get their sea legs under them, you have kind of the first movers that get in, and then you'll have other entrants that kind of come in and work on, on niche markets. I'm just, kind of just the run rate that I've seen in Colorado, it's going to fluctuate from month to month, depending upon a, a number of variables. One, what sports are being played, you know, football's certainly more popular for people to wager on than baseball is. It's just, American betters understand football better when it comes to wagering. NBA basketball, it can be popular. College basketball will be really popular in about two weeks. So you're going to see fluctuations in what that revenue is from month to month, depending upon what the sport is, what, what's in season. The other part of it will really vary, too, on what the hold rate is. If the books have a really unlucky run, which happens, you can have a, a hold, a hold rate that's extremely low. In fact, you can actually have a negative hold rate if you're on the wrong side of that wager as a book. But so far, what I've seen for 2021, I've not seen anything for 2022, it's bounced right around, I don't know, three quarters of a million to maybe a high mark of a million and a half is what I saw in Colorado, just looking on my phone.
Thank you. Representative Baker, you're recognized for an inquiry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real quick, I was born and raised in Indiana.
Where about?
South of Indianapolis, about a, an hour out in the country. Imagine that.
That's God's country down there.
It is. I like to, I miss the deer hunting especially. But anyway, I, I digress. Quickly, the, the, do you, what's your assessment of the language on the commercially, commercially reasonable portion of that? Because it's used several times in the bill. I know that also applies to the data and the, the, the price that could be set for that. So just give me your thoughts on that, just real quick. I'm just kind of, and I'll ask the, the other folks that are in favor of the bill as well.
Sure. I think what you'll probably hear from them is that commercially reasonable will be determined by the commission. Based upon previous case law in Missouri, it's not defined in the bill. Again, this is a pretty limited scope of states that have applied this standard. You know, from our perspective, if you want to really see what's commercially reasonable, let the private market work. You know, our friends at FanDuel and MGM and DraftKings entered into agreements with the leagues prior to the first state even adopting a league data requirement. So from our, from our vantage point, commercially reasonable is no mandate and let the market sort it out.
Okay. Well, I mean, when I look at commercially reasonable, I, I think in terms of, that just means as long as it doesn't cost you anything. But I guess maybe that's probably not the correct.
If they want to give it to us for free, we'll have that conversation.
Thank you.
Representative Chipman, you're recognized for an inquiry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being here. In the other states in which you operate, and you said you have partnership with FanDuel, where do they buy their data?
So FanDuel, to my knowledge, they do have official league data agreements in place that are universal. It's part of their national contracts. They found it to be in their, in their best interest to, to have that authorized gaming operator designation from the NFL, Major League Baseball, NHL, NBA, and so on and so forth.
Is, so you said you had one license or one operation where it, it, you don't use FanDuel, you have your own app?
It's in, it's in Nevada, correct.
So who do you get data from there?
So in Nevada, the way it works is, is that everything's done, it's, their licensing's a little unique when it comes to sportsbook operations. So it's not a data supplier license, it's a, basically a framework or a, or, or a mainframe or platform that's provided by IGT. And then IGT buys data from, they buy from a variety of sources, whether it's Don Best, they can buy from Sport Radar. I mean, Sport Radar is the official designated partner for some leagues. They sell NFL data, even though they're not an official designated partner of the NFL. Bet Genius sells data for various leagues, not just the NFL. So there's a whole host of sources there.
So is that who Boyd uses?
So we use IGT, whatever IGT buys, we get into a, a large, a large feed.
Okay. So do you know exactly who they purchase from for the things that would be included in this bill?
So my understanding.
For these teams or these, these leagues?
So my understanding is, is the one that comes to mind immediately is, there's a feed from Don Best is the one that I'm the most aware of. I didn't, not involved in running our sportsbooks in Nevada, but my understanding is that our feed comes from IGT and they, I think there's maybe a company by the name of, Don Best, I think was part of Cy Games at one point.
You made a comment earlier that, that the league data could possibly be faulty. And I would, if it was, I would, especially given the current circumstances with Major League Baseball and the, the deals they're trying to make right now regarding a contract with the MLB Players Association, don't you think that the players' associations from all the various leagues would throw a fit about what data is actually being put out there? Because those are the things that they use in contract negotiations between the players and the teams. So if the data was faulty, they would probably come up and say, wait a minute, are you telling me that the things that you're putting out to the public are different from what we're actually negotiating on?
I don't want to speak for the players' union. I've learned a long time ago that never go in the middle of someone else's labor agreement. That said, I'll, I'll put it to you a little bit differently. If there's a monetization that's based upon a percentage of revenue of the data, so in other words, if our book does better, so we make, our win goes higher, our hold percentage is higher, the data provider gets paid more money. If the league, not saying that the league would do this, and I don't think they would do this, but if the public starts to wonder why an official scorer's ruling goes one way or another, and they start to figure out, or they believe for some reason that it's because league, the percentage of revenue that flows to the league is better on that payout than the other way, I think that's what calls into question. And again, it's, it's one of those issues that if you have multiple sources of data, you can, and it's, it's in how the data is reported, too. I want to be clear that when sportsbooks settle wagers, they're going to, they're going to refer back to whatever the official rule, scorekeeping decision was. That doesn't mean that they won't also pay out the other side of the bet. Because I'll just give you a good example. Most recently in Nevada, there was a prop bet for the Super Bowl. It wasn't our book, it was South Point. I'd seen it on Twitter, it's legitimate. I saw the actual Twitter feed from the folks that run that book. But you may remember that the Rams had a botched extra point attempt. Now, there was a prop bet going into the Super Bowl, whether it be in a failed point after attempt or a failed two-point conversion. It was offered on the same side of a bet, or it's one, one bet with two sides. Well, I believe the NFL determined that it was a failed two-point attempt. So South Point paid out on that side. But since it was a bad snap and in the spirit of honoring the other side of the bet to keep consumers happy, they paid the other side of the bet as well, out of their own pocket.
And that's a business decision they made for their consumers.
Correct.
But that's not necessarily faulty data.
That's correct. I, I don't disagree with that, but I.
And so let me ask, are, for Missouri and Boyd, for Boyd Gaming, are they planning on partnering with FanDuel or building their own application?
Well, I'll be very clear, we have a very good relationship with FanDuel. We own 5% of FanDuel Group U.S. The other 95% is owned by Flutter. We have launched mobile sports betting applications with FanDuel throughout most of the central United States. I would envision FanDuel operating through our license here in Missouri. However, that doesn't mean that in the future, we may not launch our own.
Right. And so we could come back and change this if, if that becomes, you know, if, I would say a majority of the gaming operations, the casinos decide they want to go it alone instead of doing partnerships, then we could come address this. But for getting it in place right now, considering you're going to use FanDuel, they're already buying their data from the leagues, what is there really to throw a fit about?
I'm not throwing a fit, I'm pointing the fact, but.
I mean, and so, okay, let me ask you this, what percentage of your revenue comes from the tier-two bets that this would apply to?
Oh, there's a lot of in-play betting, I'll be clear.
I, I, I get that. And I understand, too, that because of the flow of the games, especially, let's think of baseball, you think it's a, an error and it comes back, the official scorer comes back later in the game and says it's a hit. You know, in hockey, it often, an assist will get changed because they have to go back and look in super slow motion to find out who actually touched the puck the last couple of times before the, the goal was actually scored. And so I, I get that, but if it's not a, a giant portion of your revenue, you're already going to use a company that is buying the league or buying the data from the leagues, you have the ability to appeal to the gaming commission if you think the terms aren't commercially reasonable. You're kind of covered every different direction. And I understand that there's this other place, the Don Best, that you can get league data from. I mean, is there an appreciable cost difference between what they're charging versus what the other ones are charging?
Yes, there is. And what has happened is those costs have gone up as they've been designated official league data partners.
So there is a provision in the bill that would, you could take that to the gaming commission and say, hey, we can get it a whole lot cheaper over here, so we would like to be able to do that. So there's really, I, I'm not seeing the problem because you have a, a partner that's already doing it, you have a way out if it's cheaper to do it that way. And considering how long it's taken everybody to be here today in this room, all advocating for the same position, your whole industry outside of you, all advocating for this, you know, with, you know, of course, we get to have our say, but you're going to come in and complain about one little portion that you're going to do anyway. I, I don't, I just don't understand that kind of opposition because it's very seldom does it, does an issue come before us where the parties involved have kind of got it figured out. Of course, we get to have our say, that's our job. But we often tell people, at least I do, fix it at home, fix it there. Because if you come to us to fix it, it's going to be ugly. And the fact that, because we're, we're, we're a giant hammer looking for a, a nail. We don't care if it's a big nail, a tiny nail, a screw, a crayon, it doesn't matter. We're going to smash it because that's what government does. It has to do it from that level. You know, fortunately, we have good people at the gaming commission that can take a lot of what we're trying to do and implement it in real time. But for all of the different pieces, moving pieces within this piece of legislation, to be opposed to something you're going to do anyway seems, I'm not going to say childish, I just don't, I don't get it. I, I understand that, you know, you want to look on down the road, you may do it yourself, but for the, right in the here and now, I don't get it.
I appreciate that.
I don't, I don't have really any question that, I guess you could say that's more of a statement than anything, but it just seems to me that, you know, you're kind of making a mountain out of a molehill when you're going to use the molehill anyway.
And again, I think that it, we're in the same position as where we were in our conversations, Representative House, we're just going to agree to disagree on that point, sir.
That's fine. I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative. I, the, the, I guess the one question I have, I, I want to thank you for, for testimony. The one question I had written down before we even started today was, if that data piece was opened up, is that something that otherwise, other than that, is, is Boyd in agreeance with, with the majority of the rest of the bill? Is there anything else that you personally feel like we as a committee should look at? should look at? Um, i- i- and I, I probably should have asked that of the, of the last witnesses, but please, um, tell us, tell us what you're thinking.
Uh, yes, Chairman, thank you. I, I'll be direct. I think if the league data portion came out of the bill, you would find us with the other five. I'll be very direct. I think that this is a framework that, that works for the most part. Um, it's a framework very similar, quite frankly, to what was just in, adopted in Ohio, where the casinos and the teams, uh, receive statewide mobile skins, uh, state, uh, retail sportsbooks for the teams there, I want to be clear, and for the casinos. I know it's a little different here. But, you know, again, Ohio didn't even include a league data mandate, because they, they recognized how, how this system was working and the benefits for the franchises there. But yes.
Thank you. Um, I think there are numerous members of this committee that, that historically have supported just kind of free market. Um, we're not gonna, to argue either side of this, I, I do understand the, the team's stake in this. You know, it's kind of, they're the ones that are putting on the show, and I, I get that. Um, i- it's, um, i- it's one of those things that, um, I know there's some, subject, subjectiveness to it, and we're gonna try to work through that. Uh, last thing I have for you is, um, actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold off on that discussion. Um, Vice Chair Bailey, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so, in the future, um, say that technology or another one comes along that is, uh, superbly above and beyond the rest, we're boxed out of that. If we go with, it is currently in the bill, we'd have to come back and change statute.
Uh, are you speaking about official league data?
Yes, sorry.
To the extent, well, I, I'll say this, uh, to the extent that the, that is not designated as an official league data feed potentially, a- again, and I want to be very transparent, unless the commission finds that the technology is better. Now, uh, I, I think you raise a valid point, that if other entrants try to get into the marketplace to sell data, what they're gonna want to do then is try to get an arrangement with, uh, the, the governing bodies to be an authorized reseller. Now, what will the incumbents do to try to prevent them from doing that? I don't know. I can't speak to that.
I do. I'm just teasing. Um, but it, it, it goes back to my point about this $2 admission fee from 1994. All right, once you know something's been, you know, passed and truly agreed upon and signed by the governor, it's very difficult to change. So, you know, as a free-market person, I always look at these kinds of things, okay, we do this, how are we boxing ourselves in? Thirty years from now, another set of all you brilliant gentlemen and ladies come along and, and want to do something else, and we're like, well, back in 2022, you know, darn it, we're gonna stick with it, because it's good for us, but it's not good for the competition. So, from my free enterprising brain, um, I'm kind of with you. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I, uh, I am gonna open the can of worms that I was gonna open, and, and it may make me look ignorant, and so be it. Uh, through trying to research some of this, uh, it's my understanding that there's, there's not provisions that would allow a book that had a skin within Missouri to, um, offer wagering on, on sports, uh, other, but, you know, college sports, definitely. Uh, there's no prohibition to high school sports. I know that's something that some people in this building have, have discussed with potentially, um, putting in the bill. But, you know, uh, uh, one that got brought up, uh, on our drive from Indiana is, can, can you bet on trucker, truck and tractor pulling? You know, and, and the reality is, that there's, sports aren't limited to baseball, football, basketball, hockey, soccer. They're not. And, and, um, sportsbooks, from my understanding, allow wagering on, um, multiple sports. However, not all sports have what would be classified as official league data, correct?
Correct.
And so, in that scenario, with, within the confines of this bill, like, how, how would that, i- i- if, if we have a requirement that the data portion that be used be from, is that only from leagues that provide official league data? And if the league doesn't provide official league data, then it's Wild Wild West, or can you fill us in a little bit about that?
Sure. So I, I think to your, to your point, uh, in terms of what, uh, let me address the high school issue first. And I see a lot of my colleagues in the room behind me, folks I work with in a lot of different states. We have no interest as an industry in booking one bet on a high school athletic event. I'll be crystal clear about that. Most states have a prohibition on that. So I, I think that all of us in this room would be open to, uh, insisting that an amendment be added to clarify that if we're only talking collegiate athletic events, or athletic events that are, uh, professional in nature. Um, to your point, Chairman Cups, on the different types of, of activities and events that could be open to wagering, that would be set and decided by the Missouri Gaming Commission. So the way this works is, is we would look at an array of sports that we want to book bets on, and we'd put together what's called a wagering catalog. We would present the wagering catalog, we, we all do it, uh, to the regulators. The regulators would look and see if, A, it makes sense to take wagers on, you know, this sport, this sport, this sport. We're not real sure about the governing body and, and how, how, um, pure this sport is. I'm not being disparaging, but there might be, uh, Russian table tennis. I'm just throwing an example that doesn't make sense and creates some heartburn for the regulators. So those, those books, or those bets wouldn't be booked, they wouldn't be allowed in that catalog. To your second point, or your third point, excuse me, on league data, if, and I'm being clear about what's in the bill. If a league does not come in and request it, that their data be used, or they don't have a data supplier, it's not required. I want to be clear about that.
Okay. I was under that impression, but I, I wanted to add clarification, um, to that point. Um, are there any other, uh, questions from the committee for this witness? Seeing none, I, I do, uh, thank you for, for traveling to be with us today, and, and thank you for your testimony. I-
Appreciate the time. Thank you.
With that, Representative House, um, can you?
Mo, oh, thank you. Leading mobile sports betting operators in the United States, and that includes FanDuel, DraftKings, Bet MGM, Bally's, and Fanatics. Here this afternoon to testify on behalf of my clients, and to urge this committee to support House Bills 2502 and 2556. Theodore Roosevelt, our former president, once said, "Nothing in this world is worth having or worth doing unless it means effort, pain, and difficulty," which I think pretty much sums up our collective experience these past four years. But all that effort, all that pain, and all that difficulty, has resulted in two bills that if enacted, would establish one of the best legal sports betting markets in the United States. So the question is, what makes these bills so special? Three things. Number one, the bills recognize that a robust online sports betting market already exists in Missouri. I know you've heard that point again and again, but it does bear emphasis, and I have a couple documents that support that. That market, that illegal market is served by companies located in Eastern Europe and the Caribbean. They have no tie to Missouri, and they have no tie to the United States. Those companies who operate in this state and prey upon college students and younger men and women who have gambling issues, they operate without any oversight or regulation. They pay no taxes. They do not generate a single job, or for that matter, provide any economic benefit to the state of Missouri. And perhaps most importantly, discuss something that, that I heard earlier. They could not care less whether Missouri residents who deposit money on their illegal sites are gaming in a responsible manner. They don't have tools that will allow any of those customers to set limits on the amount they can wager, let alone exclude themselves or allow their loved ones to exclude them from the site altogether. Those are things that you'll see in illegal market. And I, if any of you are curious, or just wonder if this is really true, because I, I used to be like, yeah, I didn't, and I wasn't somebody who went on illegal sites. Just go to bovada.com, B-O-V-A-D-A dot com. It will take you to a site, they'll have a free promo. You could pretty much sign up for that site and make a wager by the time we're probably done with this, well, by the time I'm done with my testimony. And that should be pretty brief. So, this legislation addresses those problems, let's strike that, evils, that are currently in Missouri today. If you look on a Google search trend, and I, I think we circ, we're gonna circulate this, you'll see how much many people look and do searches in Missouri for mybookie.com, one of the other sites. My favorite part about this is it shows you, actually breaks down by city or area, where the big, most searches are done. Um, right here, here in Columbia are actually the number one sites, probably because of the college, but just to give you a sense of how prevalent it really is, how difficult it is to root out. This bill, and some of the measures in it, will give this state the opportunity to root out legal sports sites. Uh, you know, it's going to take time, and that's why we have the promotions, that's why we have a tax rate that's competitive. But eventually, if this bill is passed, I do believe that in five, six years, you will see no more illegal websites, at least in Missouri. Number two, these bills generate real economic benefits for the state. Take my clients, for example. The legislation requires mobile operators to enter into a partnership with a local casino or a professional sports team. That partnership ensures that local businesses in Missouri will, at a minimum, receive a portion of the revenue generated from mobile sports betting. And, and there are, one of my clients, Bally's, actually is a casino and has its own app, they'll generate all the revenue from mobile sports betting in the state. And that means that these local casinos and the local teams at their option won't have to incur the costs associated with launching a sportsbook like acquiring official league data. That will fall on the mobile sportsbooks of my clients. That economic benefit is obviously in addition to the millions of dollars of new annual tax revenue that sports betting will bring to the state of Missouri. And I know there's some question about when will we see that money. It does take a little time, because we have to build a new market. Look, iPads didn't sell like iPads sold, iPhones didn't even sell like iPhones sold. It takes some time, it takes some promotion. I do believe we've seen with these later states that have entered, you know, now in year four, you're seeing faster uptake. So I think that $15 million number might be a little bit light, a little bit low for year one. We might get up to 20, 25 million, and ultimately get into 35, 40 million per year from mobile sports betting, uh, in the state. Finally, number three, and, uh, this is something I think that's really important. These bills are the product of an historic compromise. A compromise that not only involved the overwhelming majority of the state's local casinos, it sounds like five of six, um, and beloved sports franchises, but also mobile operators and the professional sports leagues. An important aspect of the compromise that we just focused on is the provision that expresses a preference, a preference for sports, sportsbooks to use official league data when setting and settling in-game wagers. That is, wagers that take place after the start of the contest. To be clear, this was an important part of the compromise, and, and let me say, to be clear, an important part of that compromise, of that language, is the bills do not mandate that operators buy this data. Instead, my clients only have to use official league data for these tier-two wagers if the data is available for purchase and is on terms that are commercially reasonable. And just to address a question earlier, there are actually factors in the bill that define what is, you know, what the commission will look at when they're deciding whether something is commercially reasonable. And I know that one casino is opposed to this provision, but my clients, also known as the companies who are actually impacted by this provision, support its inclusion in these bills. And we do so for two important reasons. First, it provides us with clear rules of the road on the most important part of our business, and that is the data that's used to set and settle wagers. It's almost like the little ball in roulette. I mean, it decides the whole thing. Uh, so having data that we, that we know, and we know what we need to buy, and when we need to buy it, is very important. Second, it gives us much-needed consistency. One of the only downsides of this state-by-state legislative approach to gaming is that my clients are often required to contort their businesses to comply with 20 different laws or regulations in 20 different states. So incorporating a national compromise, like the one that my clients reached with the major professional sports leagues into these bills, language that is included in five of the past six states, which, to go to the earlier commentary, that might be below the Mendoza line, but five out of, or that's above the Mendoza line. I mean, like, I think Patrick Mahomes would have liked those numbers in the second half of the AFC Championship. Um, sorry. Um, provides my clients with a measure of comfort. And a bottom line, that comfort outweighs the cost of the data. So in that, we are supportive of the bill. We ask you to please be supportive, and, uh, thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Are there any questions of this witness from committee? Seeing none, thank you again. Um, we're going to move on to the next, uh, testimony in opposition, opposition of the proposed legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, Bob Pretty, I live in Jefferson City, and I'm going to have to ask for some advice from you, because I had planned on testifying against three bills today, instead of just one. So, whether you want me to just ramble on-
This is, uh, this is two together, so let us have it.
Let's just see what happens here. Um, some of you have asked questions about what will happen with sports wagering as time goes by. I can answer that for you. I have information from the sports betting states that look at the early months of sports betting, and where they are right now, and how much the industry has grown. If you want to know what the impact of a tax rate is on betting in a state, I have that for you here, too. So we can get into that if you ask. If you want to know more about the $2 admission fee, and why it should be addressed, and why it should be changed, I have that for you, too. And I'm not leaving these here, but I'll talk about them if you want me to. I'll email you the documents later on. I have a friend by the name of Deborah Potter, who, for many years, was, uh, a correspondent for ABC. And I was at a seminar that she was conducting for some students, some, some young journalism students a few years ago. And one of the things she said was, "The story is not always what is in front of you. The story is quite often what is behind you. And if you want to really get to the story, you turn around and look what's back there." You might see a burning building in front of you, but if you turn around, you're going to see the people who lived in that building, or the people who did business in that building. And that's where the real story is. So I'm going to reorient the discussion a little bit here, because we've been looking at sports wagering as something that is special, and something that is unique, and something that is standalone by itself, and it really isn't. It's part of the overall casino gambling experience, and, and I'm going to focus on that a little bit if I can. I'm also going to try to give you a little bit of a historical perspective, because there's no institutional memory left in the legislature, thanks to term limits. And most of you were, oh, four years old to 15 or 16 years old in 1992, when the people of Missouri voted in favor of sports wagering, or in favor of casino, casino gambling. And so I'm going to bring you a little bit up to date about that, because we have laws that were passed at that time in the last decade of the 20th century, that are badly outmoded today, and the people of Missouri are suffering because of it, while the casino industry hauls hundreds of millions of dollars out of the state because of outdated laws, quite frankly. And I want you to know that I do not oppose casinos in Missouri, I do not oppose sports wagering. But I do have a lot of questions about how the money is going to be kept, and how it is going to be distributed, if it is going to be distributed at all. I've spent the last four years studying the bills that have been introduced in the legislature, and I went back to 2018. And I have found nothing in any of those bills that protects the state's interests whatsoever. Mr. Christopher Nelly has put $250,000 for problem gambling in his latest bill. That's admirable, but it's less than half of the money that we used to have going into their, into that fund for sometime 10 or 15 years ago. In nine of the last 20 years, there's been more put into that fund than just that. Our first two casinos opened on May the 27th, 1994, one in St. Charles and one in St. Louis. Maybe you'll want to jot down some numbers I'm about to give you, and I will give you quite a bit of numbers as I go through this. The President Casino on the Admiral Riverboat, which was on the St. Louis riverfront, charged $2 admission fees on weekdays for people to go inside and gamble for $2, and on weekends, that went up to $5. In St. Charles, the casino charged $3 during the day, and $5 on weekends. Now, the casinos are paying the state $2, and they've been paying that since 1993. The National Bureau of Labor Statistics inflation calculator last week told me that the, 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 the equivalent of $2 from June of 1994, when those casinos opened, May of June of 1994, is $3.80 today. $3 is the equivalent of $5.70, and $4 is the equivalent of $7.60, and $5 then is- $3 is the equivalent of $5.70, and $4 is the equivalent of $7.60, and $5 then is worth $9.50 now. The casinos were charging people that much money to go into and gamble for two hours, but now all they want to do is pay the state $2 per admission. Gamblers were protected then by loss limits of $500 per cruise. Because there was an ambiguity in the law, when the first casinos opened, we did not have games of chance. We had to change the law, change the constitution, to allow games of chance. And today, slot machines account for 85% of casino revenue. The original tax rate was 20%. The casinos complained from the beginning that the loss limit made us uncompetitive with other states. And so in 28, 2008, the loss limit was eliminated. But in return, the state said, if you want to make more money, the state wants to make more money, too. And that is when we went from 20 to 21% tax on casino revenue. Various tax rates have been proposed through the years, 12% on one of the first bills, 6.75, now they're at 20, and now they think that 10 degrees, 10 cents or 10% is what the state should, should levy. Now it's 2022. And instead of saying, we want to make more money and give the state a little bit more, too, the casinos are saying, we want to make a lot more money, but we want to change the rules on adjusted grocery receipts so there is less money to be taxed, and we want you to have a low tax on top of that. It will mean some additional income to the state, yes, but less than half what it would amount to if the tax were held at 21%. If you don't, the state will lose whatever it would have earned under 21%. And the average tax on gambling overall will probably drop below 20. There are various ways to calculate that. I'm not sure how we'd go about that exactly, but I think that ultimately, the overall tax at 10% on sports wagering will average out to less than 20 for total casino gambling. Now, they would prefer that you think that casino gam, or sports wagering is something entirely separate, a totally separate entity, that should be treated differently from the rest of casino gambling. But it is not a separate entity. And all you have to do is read the bills. If you look in section 313, 1800, that's the definition section, you will find a list of games of skill, seven games of skill, to which an eighth game of skill is being added with this legislation. The eighth game of skill is sports wagering. Nothing is separate in that definition that says this is something special from these other seven. It's just, as I like to put it, one more cheeseburger on the McDonald's menu, one more thing for people to enjoy when they go into a casino. Casino patrons can walk from the poker table to the sports book. They can walk from the sports book over to the craps table if they want. It's all under one roof. It's all in one company. It's all in one casino. It is not a different form of wagering. It's the same form of wagering. The casino has an advantage. A gambler bets that he or she can bait the system. The casino accepts a bet, processes the bet. If the better wins, the better gets some money back. If the better loses, the casino keeps the money. At the end of the day, it all goes into the same bank account. At the end of the year, it all is a tax, is taxable income. There is no second line on the tax form from the IRS or the Department of Revenue. The tax that the state charges as income tax is the same, whether it's sports wagering or poker. So there is no, there is no different state or federal income tax on sports wagering, separate from that that goes with the casinos. The low tax rate on AGR is justified because the house advantage, we've been told in other hearings, is only 5%. A 2015 study for the Center for Gaming Research at UNLV indicates 5% actually is pretty good. That many or most table games in our casinos have a house advantage in the 2% to 3% range. But the industry, for basically 30 years, has not asked for a lower tax rate on those games, but now it decides it wants to have a lower tax game for sports wagering on this isolated thing that's not isolated at all. There's an online industry watchdog publication called LegalSportsReport.com that has tracked sports wagering month by month and state by state since the first legal non-Nevada sports bet was placed in New Jersey in June of 2018. The average hold in all of those states, in all of those months, in the last two and a half years, is not 5%. It is 7.3. So the only 5% to me is a red herring, and I would urge you to be careful in considering it. The industry has said it can't do sports wagering at 21%. It appears it's willing to let the legislature set the rate at 10 now. Again, I went back to Legal Sports Report. I investigate, I looked at the 2020 census numbers in each sports wagering state, and then I checked the most recent handle listed by Legal Sports Report, and I calculated a per capita bet in each of those states. The 10% states. New York's per capita bet was about $84 in December of '21. Virginia, 10%, was more than $49. Arizona was more than $60 and a half. Colorado, just under 80. West Virginia, only 19. Wyoming, a little more than 21. The District of Columbia, $27 per capita with a 10% tax. Tennessee, where the tax rate is 20%, the per diem, the per capita bet was almost $56. Pennsylvania, where it's 36%, was just under $58. New Hampshire's bet was $62.75. New Hampshire taxes in casino proceeds at 50% and, and remote wagering at 51. Rhode Island, which also has a 51% per capita tax, had a bet of more than $50. Delaware, at 50%, only got about 14. Pretty clearly, the casinos can operate at more than 10%. Pretty clearly, they can operate at more than 21, and they do. Casinos have argued the tax on sports wagering should be 6.75, or at one time, that was their argument, because that's the rate charged in Las Vegas. What they didn't tell you is that 6.75 is the rate charged on gambling statewide in Nevada on all forms of sports. There's no difference between sports wagering and everything else. In addition to that, the tax that is applied to the revenues in, in Nevada is the same as we apply a tax on the revenues here. In other words, their calculation of what revenues are is the same as our AGR. Nevada has no deductions, lowering the amount that is available for taxation. So this legislature has a choice. I guess if you want to go with the Nevada template, you can lower the tax on all forms of gambling to 10% or 6.75, or you can make sports wagering 21% to be uniform with all of the other forms of gambling that we have in the state of Missouri. One final note about this section, because everything I've said is backed by hard numbers. I can show you every piece of mathematics that I use, that I have used to talk about these things this way. And if you want to see it, let me know, and I'll be glad to send it to the chairman and then have him pass it on to you. A major issue the casinos hope you won't notice missing in these bills, and from all bills in 2018, it has been said that approval of sports wagering will generate more admissions than our casinos. There is some skepticism about that. Just about a year after the first newly legal bets were made in New Jersey, the state was reporting it had taken in about $3 billion in sports bets. And about 80% of those bets had been made by people who never physically entered a casino. The CEO of a global, global provider of internet gambling told the East Coast Gaming Congress in June of 2019 that more than 90% of all sports wagers will be done remotely within five to 10 years. That means that 90% of the sports wagers that we will be getting in Missouri will not involve anyone sitting in a casino placing a bet. The returns that we will get in terms of admission fees that finance a lot of state programs and services will not gain anything significant if we go ahead and pass these bills as they are written. Our laws were written at a time when we lived in an appointment society. You went to stores when they were open to buy things. You got your news at 5:30 in the evenings. You went to a movie, you had to get there when the movie started, unless, of course, you wanted to sit around and wait until it started over again, and then you got up and left where you came in. We now have reached a point where technology has gone beyond 1993. I've talked to a lot of people who were here in '93, and I was here. I was covering those events as they developed as a reporter. I covered the campaign, I covered the early development of these laws. I do not recall ever hearing anyone discuss, and I've talked to some of the people who were here 20 years ago, and they don't recall it ever being discussed, that, number one, we would ever have casino betting that did not involve people going to the casino. So the laws that were written then are so far outdated today that we are facing a situation where now 90% of this new form of wagering is not going to generate any admission income at all. And that means that the things that are financed by admissions will continue to wither away as they have been. So I'm going to suggest that the law be changed so that people who bet electronically will be placing bets that are the equal of those being placed by people who are in the casino. There is a way to do that, and I will talk about that in a moment. The admission fee has been frozen at $2 since 1993. And again, I was here when we talked about that, and nobody ever thought there would be a time when people didn't walk in to do their betting. So here's some numbers for you again. The Bureau of Labor Statistics a few days ago calculates the 2022 equivalent of $2.1993 is now $3.94. The casinos pay the state under this antiquated law $2. The other $1.94 stays in their pockets. Making the situation worse is the purchasing power of those $2 from 1993 is now down to So they keep $1.94, they pay the state $2, and the $2 the state gets will buy a dollar's worth of stuff. Because your legislative ancestors didn't put an escalator clause into the admission law passed in 1993, the casinos have kept, as of the end of the last fiscal year, more than $978 million. And of the money the state did receive, the value of that money has shrunk by $650 million more. Because that $2 admission fee has never been adjusted for inflation and should have been year after year after year, so that it would not have been that big a jolt to the casinos, Missouri has lost now $1.5 billion. Half of that money would have gone to home dock cities. The other half would have gone to finance the worthy causes of the Gaming Commission and the Gaming Commission itself. Unless that $2 admission fee is changed, the programs that are financed by those admission fees will continue to suffer. Last year, in a pandemic year, in which the casinos had their worst attendance record since fiscal '95 and '96, the state of Missouri received $27.8 million for its share of the admission fees. The home dock cities got $27.8 million. Because of the lack of an inflation adjustment, the casinos kept $44 million. Making matters even worse, in the future, 90% of sports wagering will generate no appreciable increase in income for admissions, unless the change is made. There have been 30 bills introduced since 2018 on sports wagering. Not one of them has had one line that protects the state's interests. And what are the state's interests? Well, they're your constituents' interests. They're your home dock cities, if you have one. They're your veterans. They're college kids looking for estate scholarship help. They're a National Guard program that provides escorts for veterans' funerals. They play the taps, they give the flag, they fire the salute. And there are people who have problems with gambling. I've seen studies, and I've looked at a lot of them the last few months, that indicate that the problem of problem gambling, was cited earlier as being in the neighborhood of 2% to 3%, could very well jump to 9% or more. And it's not just the gambler himself that's the problem, or herself. It's their family and their, and their, and their community and their job. Those are all affected by this. But except for this token that is in Mr. Christopher Nelly's latest bill, there's no increase in the money available for problem gambling. I mentioned there have been 30 bills. There will soon be a 31st. The 31st bill that will be filed takes a look at camp, it takes a look at casino gambling holistically. And it says, it, it says basically that sports wagering is part of the entire casino picture, not separate from it, not an individual entity that deserves special care. It says 21% will be the tax on everything. We hold that line instead of seeing that overall average tax reduced. The admission fee goes up by $1.50. 50 cents would go for Gaming Commission, 50 cents to the home dock cities, and 50 cents would go for a National Steamboat Museum somewhere in Missouri, which is where this whole thing originated with me. Now, that means the admission fee would go up to 350, even though the Bureau of Labor Statistics says that for this fiscal year, it is something like 369, or 394, if you want to look at even more recent figures. So we're leaving 20 to 40 cents on the table. The casinos can have that, although they won't be grateful for it. Or the legislature can look at that money, and that is where you can find the extra funds you need for problem gambling. That might be where you find extra funds for state programs that are chronically underfunded. Public defender system comes to mind. We'll leave that extra 40 cents or so on the table, and you folks can add to it as you see the need and you see needs that need to be met, that only can be met through the admission fee. I've told some other people that I've talked to about this, that I don't know, in all the years that I've covered the legislature, and I covered it for 40 years, I don't know of a single non-appropriations bill that has the chance to do more good for more people without any kind of a general tax increase than this one. My representative, Dave Griffith, has taken the language I gave him and taken it down to legislative research. It's being written up now and will be introduced very shortly. So I encourage you to take a look at this issue, not just with blinders on that looks only at sports wagering, but to see, see sports wagering for what it is. It is part of the overall casino picture. It is part of the overall casino economy. Frankly, I think the bill that is being drafted right now is probably something that can, that can fit well with most of the things we've talked about this afternoon, because that bill looks at the entire casino industry and the entire casino laws from 1993. And it makes sure we're never in this situation again, because one provision says every year the Gaming Commission will consult with the Bureau of Labor Statistics and judge and use the figure from the BLS to adjust the admission fee. So we'll never again be in a situation where resources for these programs and services will be declining. It will always be keeping up with the economy. So I've outlined some things that I think you should look at beyond simply looking at sports wagering, because it's a much bigger issue than just sports wagering. Turn around and look at the issue behind you. Because they talk about their stakeholders, well, who are your stakeholders? Your stakeholders are the ones I just mentioned, your teachers, your veterans, your college kids, and your home dock cities. Those are your constituents. Those are your stakeholders. And you should think about them, too, not just the stakeholders that have been before you so far. Mr. Chairman, I have, I think, pretty well gone over things as I had them in my mind. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to deal with them.
Mr. Pretty, thank you for, for bringing that before us. I know we have a lot more people here, and so we are going to try to speed it up.
That's fine.
You have provided myself with some data already, and I know that you've got a wealth of data. If the committee does have questions, we can sure enough
Sure.
get in touch with you. I am going to open it up briefly for questions from the committee. Vice Chair Bailey, please proceed.
I don't know why you looked at me. Good afternoon, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And thank you for that historic perspective. And it makes me feel less out of the box with your statements today.
Thank you.
Because I look at it as, yes, I'm representing my constituents, I'm a broker for them, and I don't see this as a good deal for them. You know, there was, there's a lot of things in this bill, you know, that I didn't know about, and neither of the sponsors came to visit, but I had a barrage of lobbyists. And, you know, I mean, that's the nature of the beast, and I get that. But it was really good to hear their perspective on that. And I can't help but think, if we can't learn from the past of, of not fixing that admin fee of $2 for inflation, and if we lock things down now to 2022 as the ultimate year, this is it? God, I hope not really, to be honest. But, I mean, we, I think we need to be more for, have more foresight and, and not be locked into something, because there's going to be new technologies come forward. And I just appreciate your comments here today, because we don't really hear that a lot. lot. We just hear, you have to do it this, like this, this way, and it won't work any other way. And that's really what we get. And being just a human being, being on the earth for this long, I know that's not the case. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anything else?
Are there any other questions in the committee, Mr. Priti?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now move on to the next witness in favor of the proposed legislation.
I am the Executive Vice President and Chief Revenue Officer of the St. Louis Blues. I'll get right to the point. If you have any questions for me, we can hustle through this in the interest of time. But a few things. My title itself, I am in charge of, and the teams that report to me, I really have two job descriptions. One is to raise revenue for the team. In the case of the St. Louis Blues, that's so that we can compete for the Stanley Cup. We are up against competition from large market teams, New York, Chicago, LA. The revenue that we generate allows us to compete competitively with them. The other part of our job is to market, is to find out what our fans want and to try to deliver that to them. And sports gambling is something that has been of interest in the market studies that we've done for our fans. Anecdotally, I know it's of interest in the marketplace itself. And so the ability to bring this to the citizens of Missouri and to our fans is something that we feel very strongly about. As a citizen, I appreciate the questions that you're asking, and I think they're very good questions. I can tell you that as a citizen, it is disappointing to watch people going across the bridge into Illinois to gamble. It's disappointing to see the revenue being generated on that side of the river versus ours. So it's something that ultimately, we believe, brings quality entertainment, brings fan engagement, and brings the opportunity to generate revenue for the city of Missouri. I'll quickly hit some of the key points. If you have any questions for me, I'm glad to answer them. On the VLTs, I think it was mentioned earlier, and we agree, this really isn't our fight. As a citizen, I'm not really in love with the idea of slot machines being in the corner deli. But having said that, I think our bigger point is that this really has nothing to do with the sports gaming industry or sports gambling. It really has nothing to do with the bill that's being put forth. On the official sports data, I won't bring it so lightly. Representative Chipman, I think you kind of summarized anything that I would tell you. The one thing I will tell you about official league data is that from our standpoint, you know, we had to work together quite a bit to get it to this point. We had to work quite a bit with the casinos. Even internally, we had to work quite a bit together. Now we're bringing this to you, you know, for your input. I have enjoyed all of our conversations. You know, Mr. Salz, I actually enjoyed several of our conversations. There was quite a bit of tete-a-tete. I guess I'll use his words, I just respectfully disagree. I don't really understand what the issue is. It feels philosophical versus actual impact. From a league perspective, I can tell you one thing that is of massive importance, maybe the most important, is the validity of our results. And I appreciate you using the example of who gets the assist on a goal. We do this because it matters to the players. We do this because it matters to the fans. Our leagues do this because it is of the utmost importance that the results of our games are above question. Can you go back in time and find isolated incidents of situations where individuals have tried to affect that? You absolutely can. I think we can actually thank some of our casino partners for making that harder and harder to do. Because fans are of interest, there is continuous scrutiny on what is accurate and what is not accurate, and what seems to be out of line with, you know, with what is true, I guess. So in result, representing the St. Louis Blues just would like to say that we fully support this bill and fully support the questions that you're bringing forward on the details of the bill. But we do believe that it is time so that we are not sitting as an island.
Thank you. Are there any questions in the committee for this witness? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. I'm not going to do it that way. I'm not going to do it. All the teams, I'm going to go next in opposition.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Andy Arnold here today on behalf of J&amp;J Ventures Gaming of Missouri to testify in opposition of House Bills 2502 and 2556. First, let me say that J&amp;J is not opposed to gaming. We're not opposed to sportsbook. We support a balanced blend of gaming. It creates jobs, investment, and it generates tax revenues, most importantly, for the state of Missouri. After reviewing these bills, I can see why some are promoting the legislation and why some, like J&amp;J and one of the state's largest casino operators, is not supporting the bill. The legislation, from our view, is a big money grab for the professional sports teams, casinos, and the sports operators. The legislation will generate hundreds of millions of dollars in revenue for professional sports teams, from promotional licensing fees, data use agreements, and for the casinos. Just imagine the Chicago Cubs. The Chicago Cubs cut a deal with FanDuel, excuse me, DraftKings for $100 million to be their little nugget or whatever it is. Just imagine what the Missouri sports teams, our valued teams, can bring in under their own pockets, which is not state tax revenue. Because this legislation grants those teams the right to put an exclusive person or group into to promote their brand, gives them that right within 400 feet of their stadiums. I would also say that no one's mentioned the potential constitutional conflicts in this legislation. I know Mr. Winter is always really clear about talking about VLT legislation and the potential constitutionality of allowing the lottery to have VLTs, which it still befuddles me that he would do that. But from this particular legislation, you've been granted by the voters of the state of Missouri to provide and permit casino gambling at bricks-and-mortar licensed facilities. But it is not clear that this legislation gives you the authority to use what's considered a hub-and-spoke scheme that the bill allows, that allows for a computer server to be located on the casino floor, and then you to use that handheld device in your hand, or me to use this computer to place a bet in Wright City or Shell knob or Eureka or someplace where there is not a casino. I bring this up because there's three things that we think that support this. Our lawyers have looked at this, and it kind of raises the question, is the way you're doing this through the casinos and the prohibitions that are there. First of all, the constitutional prohibition in Article 36 and 39-9 that prohibits the legislature from authorizing gaming, that does not fall within one of the five voter-authorized exceptions of the Constitution. A review of these constitutional exceptions shows that Missouri Lottery is the only entity authorized to conduct gaming in the state of Missouri without restriction. The constitutional amendments allowing bingo, paramutual wagering on horse races, casino gambling, sweepstakes, and raffles all contain restrictions on who can offer the games and where the games can be offered. The constitutional authority that gives the, that authorizes casino gambling, Article 36 and 39E, only allows the legislature to permit casino gambling games to be conducted at licensed facilities that are located within 1,000 feet of the Missouri and Mississippi Rivers. And third, there's a recent federal court decision that characterized the remote access provisions of the hub-and-spoke scheme as a fiction when it comes to where the bets are placed. Again, Article 3 restricts where games can be conducted and does not say that someone located in Branson or Shell knob or Wright City can use a laptop or smartphone to make a bet in Kansas City or St. Louis. So these uncertainty, we are, will surely lead to litigation against the Missouri Gaming Commission if the hub-and-spoke scheme proposing this legislation is authorized. To speak a little bit about your adjusted gross receipts issues, there's one thing, two things that really jump out at me on this bill. The first thing is 313-800 changes, which is the current gaming law. They allow sportsbook. They say that the revenue is generated from sportsbook can't count towards the current adjusted gross receipts. So, and they call it a game of skill. That tells me that the casinos, if this bill is to pass, will get the right to do sportsbook at their bricks-and-mortar. The questions are, those constitutional issues are litigation of, can you place a bet at the sportsbook that's located adjacent to Busch Stadium or Chief Stadium or pick your professional sports team? The other issue you get into is, is that by allowing all those deductions and all those things that are in there, you're actually going to allow the casinos and the sports wagering operators to recoup their player acquisition costs, which is the number-one cost they have. So I am starting to get FanDuel things, I'm not a sports better to do any of this stuff. I, you know, I learned a long time ago that you can't win. You can try, you can have fun with it if you want to. If you want to blow some bucks, that's the way to do it, but just not that guy. But by allowing them to recoup their acquisition costs, either by merchandise giveaways, promotional credit, free plays, they even get to deduct their bad debt decisions. So they take a bad debt from somebody, they can deduct that. Their federal income taxes, their federal excise taxes, just about any incentive associated with getting someone to make a bet in the state of Missouri is deductible under this bill. In addition to tempting Missourians to make wagers, these deductions also serve to lower the adjusted gross receipts taxable amount provided for the state and the effective tax rate, tax rate. The definition also contemplates the adjusted gross receipt will be negative at some point, meaning that all those things that you're deducting will take it to the negative point through, there will be nothing to tax. So the question is, this 15 to 20 million, 25 maybe on the outside, it just, the fiscal note shows it could be somewhere from 6.5 to 14 million on the range. There is a big mistake in both of these bills where they don't allow them to deduct the winning wagers. If you want to keep that the way it is, that's probably good for the state of Missouri because that's about $100 million to you in the state of Missouri. They'll make nothing. But I'm sure they're going to want to fix that. When we look at all this stuff from a whole perspective, it's almost like a triple dip. You get to deduct all your deductions against your Missouri Gaming Excise Tax. Then you get to take those same things, deduct them against your federal income tax because they're advertising and promotional expenses, and that all flows through to the state's tax rate. So it's basically, it's basically, you're getting a triple deduction from that perspective. As far as this distribution of the revenues, I think there's a big mistake in this area too, because the bill allocates $250,000 to problem gaming programs, and then it says the remainder of the money shall go to the Gaming Proceeds for Education Fund. And then it says to be distributed according to 313-835, I believe is the number. The problem is, that's where the distribution for the home dock city is, and when you take $250,000 and put it over here, the rest of it and put it over here, how much does the home dock city get? Zero. They get nothing. I'm sure it's a mistake. I'm sure they didn't want to cut out Kansas City and St. Louis and Maryland Heights and Booneville and St. Joe and La Grange and all those cities that are out there counting on that home dock city revenue. As far as the problem gambling goes, you know, I was, a friend of mine went out to Las Vegas for Super Bowl weekend, and he came back with this really nice little thing that was from, I think the company was called William Hill, and the phrase on it was, "The action never stops." And it was like 20 pages of every kind of bet in the world that you could make. And the question is, we have seen an expansion, an uptick of problem gambling in other states through this, and you can expect that you're going to get an uptake here. And the question is, is $250,000 going to cover that? My guess is it probably is not. In conclusion, I would say that Missourians want choices when it comes to gaming, passing legislation that benefits all Missourians and has a balanced approach, creates certainty in the marketplace that adequately addresses problem gambling, addresses the growing illegal gambling problem we have with the slot machines in the state with illegal option, and will serve the citizens of the state of Missouri providing much-needed educational money. The legislation picks winners and losers by mandating the use of league data to settle all bets and granting exclusive authority to the sports teams to dictate who can provide sports wagering in proximity to their stadiums. The bill moves casino gambling off the Missouri and Mississippi Rivers to all corners of the state and expands access to anyone with a smartphone and a laptop. In short, this legislation is the largest expansion of gambling in the state's history. It benefits the casinos, it benefits professional sports teams and wagering operators and the moneyed interests that are interested in passing this bill without necessarily taking into all the considerations for the citizens of the state of Missouri. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd answer any questions.
Representative Chipman, you are recognized for inquiry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick, who are you representing?
I represent J&amp;J Ventures of Missouri.
What is their business?
We are a local, I guess you would call us a coin operator business in the state of Missouri that would like to bring video lottery to the state of Missouri.
Are you upset that this bill does not include VLTs?
Absolutely.
So your opposition isn't primarily to the bill itself, but the fact that you're not in it?
I would be opposed to some of the things and schemes that are in here. And I'll tell you why. Over the years, we've filed legislation. The gaming companies have come in and said, "Oh, no, 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 you can't do this." So we refine that legislation to where, right now, we have a really good piece of legislation as far as generating about $250 million in revenues for the state of Missouri and putting the games that are currently in, all these illegal games that are out in the public in private rooms where they're in the back of the house type of thing, to where it's not in the public's eye. And I guess the reason I would say I don't like this legislation is it's just a giveaway. It gives hundreds of millions of dollars in licensing fees to the Cardinals and to the Royals and to the Chiefs and all these teams. If that's what you want to do, that's fine, because maybe they'll go out and get a pitcher that can, you know, be a Cy Young winner, or maybe they'll get out and they'll get somebody and we'll actually win a playoff game, another couple playoff games from the Chiefs and get some soccer championships and whatever. But at the end of the day, to me, this is nothing more than a big giveaway. I mean, it needs to be balanced. Do tax revenues need to be balanced for the state? You're getting $15 million, they're getting $100 million. I guess that's a great balance if you're one of the casinos or one of the sports teams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further questions from the committee? Vice Chair Bailey, you are recognized for inquiry.
Reading my mind. More of a statement. I like your style, Mr. Arnold. A lot of people lied to me in this building, but I always can come to you, whether you're for it, against it, whatever, you always tell me the truth, and it's so rare, and I appreciate it. And it's, it is unique in this building. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, I do thank you, Mr. Arnold, for your testimony here today. We will now move on to the next team member or representative from a team in favor of,
Good afternoon. My name's Adam Sacks. I'm Chief Legal Officer of the Kansas City Royals and Senior Vice President. I wanted to say a special hello to Mr. Elbrock and Sharp, who I hope are Royals fans. I was with Mr. Sharp's dad last week, who was telling me about what an extraordinary baseball player you were, so perhaps there's still an opportunity for the Royals. But I will be brief. The Royals' perspective is that this legislation is going to enhance our fans' experience. We're interested in growing our game and keeping people captivated, new ways of keeping people's attention for nine innings, and this is certainly a way that has succeeded in the past, and we expect it will do it again. We think there is also great momentum on the Kansas side to legalize this, and it would make sense, given the large number of states now that have legalized sports betting. It makes only the best of sense to have this happen. I also wanted to say a special thanks to Bill DeWitt and Mike Whittle from the Cardinals who have kind of led this effort on behalf of the franchises. It's not been easy. I was not around for the first three years of this process, but I know this year has been far more smooth than prior years, and the ability to get the, all the professional sports franchises, including now the Kansas City Current involved, is extraordinary, and it's thanks to their leadership and their willingness also to engage with the casinos in a constructive... and their willingness also to engage with the casinos in a, in a constructive dialogue that hopefully will get some real progress here this year in Missouri. It's also been very fun to work with the Chiefs. Anne Scharf is here. Amber Cox from the Kansas City Current, who have made a significant investment in Kansas City, Missouri with their plans to build the first women's professional soccer stadium in the United States. So we're thrilled that they're a part of this group. I also wanted to take a moment to just say a special note in support of incorporating official league data into the legislation. We believe that most people, and particularly our fans, will be more comfortable with the reliability and the integrity of the process and the data if this is incorporated. We also have a general sense that the longer states have been in this game of legalizing sports betting, the more reliant upon official league data, they tend to be in the legislation. So appreciate the time and open to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the committee for this witness? Seeing none, thank you for traveling to be with us today.
Thank you.
We will now move to the next testimony in opposition of the proposed legislation. If there is anyone. Seeing no one, we're going to go ahead and continue with those in favor.
Mr. Chairman, committee members. Let me introduce myself. My name is Jason Tine. I'm the Chief Operating Officer and General Counsel for St. Louis City Soccer Club, and I am here to voice our support for the bills at issue. But before we get to the bills, we're new, and maybe other than Representative Bailey, maybe you all haven't really heard much of us. So let me just tell you a little bit about ourselves. We're building in downtown west area of St. Louis, a brand new, state-of-the-art, open-air, natural grass surface, 22,000-seat, 22,500-seat soccer stadium. We'll have 17-plus home games a year. In addition, we'll try to attract international friendlies, we'll try to attract U.S. Men's and Women's National Team games, college games, tournaments, high school games and tournaments. In addition, we have a large plaza immediately adjacent to our stadium at which we'll try to host many festivals and large events like that. And we have countless sites in the stadium to have, our goal is over 200 events a year. Our goal is to activate downtown west, and the best way to do that is to have an event at that stadium as much as we can. The stadium will be finished in, in July. The entire project will be finished in July, and we're already planning events. We have a couple of things on, on, in line for mid-September. And the first MLS game will be in March of 2023. In addition to the stadium, we have what we call a pavilion, which is a team store, a cafe, and a fan experience center that's open all year round. We have a training facility with three practice fields, two grass, one artificial, that will be the home for our first team, our second team, like a minor league team, and four academy teams. There will be training downtown, in downtown west St. Louis, basically every day of the year. In addition, we purchased a near 100-year-old building that we are rehabbing for our headquarters. It's immediately adjacent to the training facility. And finally, we have a parking garage across the street from the stadium that we're building that will have about 495 spaces. All in all, there's over 30 acres in, in a downtown urban setting, downtown west in St. Louis, that is completely unique in the world of sports. We've already signed our first player for that 2023 team. He's playing in the European Soccer League right now. Fans are very excited about this. And just generally speaking, St. Louis is a hotbed of soccer, tremendous and rich history. Six members from the 1950 U.S. World Cup team that famously beat England were from the Hill area in St. Louis. Every world, every U.S. World Cup team since has had at least one St. Louisan. St. Louis University still holds the record for most NCAA titles with 10. And in 1980, St. Louis University and Southern Illinois University Edwardsville played a game at Busch Stadium, thank you, Bill, where they set what still stands as the attendance record of over 22,000 fans, NCAA attendance record. Specifically, our fan base has been ignited. We had our ticket deposit campaign about a year and a half ago. Our goal was to beat the then-record that Austin had set pre-pandemic. They had in 24 hours, 30,000 ticket deposits. We beat that in 15 minutes. We had 55,000 in the first 24 hours. We, in our first year of selling merchandise, we were seventh in the league, even though we only had four months of sales. So let me come back to why we support these bills. These bills allow our teams, our, our fans, to have a deeper engagement with our team. We're a new team and a new league in eastern Missouri. This allows them to better engage with the players, with the team, and with the league. With that, I'll end my comments, but if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions of this witness from the committee? Seeing none, thanks again for traveling to be with us today. We're going to continue with those in support.
Good afternoon. I'm Anne Scharf. I'm here on behalf of the Kansas City Chiefs, and just wanted to be here to share our support for legalized sports betting in Missouri. There's a lot that's been said today and going on the tail end. I don't want to overhash, you know, all the same things again, but the thing I would say is between the Chiefs and the NFL, I have almost 20 years of NFL experience right now. And if you had told me even five years ago, certainly 10 or 15, that the NFL would get to a point where I'd be sitting here today in support of this, I don't know that I would have believed you. The NFL has come a long way. This wasn't a topic that the NFL came out of the gate and said, you know, that absolutely had to happen, and we care about this as a revenue generator. It, it's something that took a really long time, and it's something that I think today, not just the NFL, but all the groups in the room, so much work has been done to compromise and to truly make this bill one where no one side is getting exactly what they want. And what we're trying to do is really make sure that we do something that is, works for as many groups as possible. But from an NFL, you know, perspective, especially with the league data point, there's been a lot of talk about revenue today, but the part I really want to hit on is just the integrity piece of it. That's one of the big reasons the NFL was kind of dragging their feet in terms of coming to the table with these kind, with this, you know, with these kind of deals, or because they want to make sure that their consumer protections, they want to make sure that we're not putting our players at risk, and we want to make sure that moving forward, that there is a market where consumers are protected, but also where the NFL and where teams and other leagues can protect their own intellectual property and their own, you know, data and statistics and information. So I can answer any specific questions, but really just today, wanted to say that, just that we believe that any legalization should be in a regulated market and should minimize potentially harmful impacts on consumers and the sport. So I'm happy to answer any other questions as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the committee for this witness? Go Chiefs, right?
Good afternoon. My name is Amber Cox. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the Kansas City Current, the women's professional team playing in Kansas City. Similar to the St. Louis Soccer Club, we are one of the newest professional sports teams to come to Missouri. We are part of the National Women's Soccer League, and we began play in 2021. Our owners are Angie Long, Chris Long, and Brittany Matthews. As Adam from the Royals previously mentioned, our owners made one of the most historic announcements last fall in women's professional sports history. They shared their plans for a privately funded $85 million soccer-specific stadium at Berkeley Riverfront Park in Kansas City, Missouri. This is the first stadium designed specifically for a women's professional team in the United States. And just one month prior, the ownership group also announced their intent to build a state-of-the-art training facility for our women's team with the investment of $15 million. Construction is underway on that project, which will open later this spring in Riverside. Now, I'm a proud Missouri native. I grew up in Monette, very close to some of the areas that you all represent. I fell in love with basketball when I was a young kid. I watched a lot of Sunday afternoon games, Celtics versus the Lakers, NBA on NBC, Larry Bird versus Magic Johnson. But, you know, I was a, a young girl playing sports in the 80s and early 90s. I didn't have any professional female athletes to look up to when I was growing up. There was no path for me to play professional basketball or soccer when I was a young kid. So I left Missouri and spent about 20 years working across the country, primarily in women's professional sports, but was absolutely thrilled to return to my home state last year and be a part of growing women's professional soccer in the show-me state. We have the best women's players in the world now competing in Kansas City, but more importantly, the impact this team is making on the lives of our daughters and granddaughters, who can now dream about playing professionally, is truly beyond measure. And to continue growing our fan base and support, the fan experience has to continue evolve as well. Sports wagering has the potential to drive attendance, viewership, and investment. That's good for all of the teams, our whole state, but especially helpful, helpful for a league like ours that is just a decade old. Just last year, the Phoenix Mercury, a professional women's basketball team in Phoenix, entered into a historic partnership with Bally's, netting the team $66 million over a 15-year period. That's historic for a women's professional team the largest of its kind. These are game-changing opportunities, especially for a new team like the current. These types of sports betting relationships help women's sports cast a wider net to engage new fans and create more equity across the sports landscape. This will be good for our players, good for our team, and our community. We are excited that this bill will create a sports district for wagering purposes that also allows our new stadium to have a family-friendly atmosphere immediately surrounding the venue. As our stadium becomes the centerpiece of future development for Berkeley Riverfront Park, we want to maintain a neighborhood environment as housing, retail, and other commercial activities come up around us. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, thank you for allowing me to testify today. I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. I'm going to let you tell everyone here who Monette's rival, big rival is.
I mean, we have a lot of them. The Aurora Hound Dogs, the Mount Vernon Mountaineers.
I'm, I'm a Cassville guy.
Cassville Wildcats.
Yeah, Berry County Brawl.
My, yeah, my nephew, Ryan Bowen-Preddy, was a star down there.
Oh, really?
Yes, yes, sir.
Small world, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Thank you for being with us. Are there any questions from the committee for this witness? Seeing none, thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Scott Swain, representing the I Develop and Economic Association. We're an organization of 32 companies and growing that deal in the technology, payments, marketing, legal, a number of things that all surround sports wagering. We certainly want to go on record. I have just under an hour of, of testimony here. I've scaled it back, though, to 30 minutes, if that works for you, Mr. Chairman.
Let's have her.
I do want to, I do want to thank, before I go, I want to thank the stakeholders. It was mentioned earlier that your constituents are also stakeholders, right? And so just to give you just a little bit of color around that, in the last 60 days, GeoComply, one of the members of our, or our association, did some data reveal in and around Missouri, and they recognized that 3.9 million and change transactions occurred within 10 miles of the Missouri border in relationship to online sports betting. So your constituents would like to see this as well. So we want to go on record in favor, answer any questions if needed.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the committee for this witness?
And I did submit testimony in full, that is, so you can read that this evening.
Perfect. Thank you. Continuing with those in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Steve Fear, and I serve as Special Counsel for the National Hockey League Players' Association. I do have significant ties to Missouri. I don't currently live or have an office in Missouri, but I did have an office for 40 years and lived in Missouri for 15, and I've been a member of the Missouri Bar since 1978. I'm here today not only on behalf of the Hockey Players' Association, but on behalf of the other four major U.S. sports players associations, specifically the National Football League Players' Association, the NFLPA, the Major League Baseball Players' Association, the MLBPA, the National Basketball Players' Association, the NBPA, and the Major League Soccer Players' Association, the MSPA. We work together on a number of matters of mutual interest throughout the U.S., and we've appeared in a number of state capitals on the issue of sports betting. Together, we represent thousands of professional athletes from all over the world who play the five major U.S. team sports, and they create a significant economic footprint and many jobs. And in addition, I think it's fair to state that this revenue stream that you're talking about creating is being created arguably. On the backs of the athletes, that is, most of the bets will be over the performances of the athletes. Nonetheless, the athletes are not here with their hand out, they're not asking for any money. All we are asking is that you consider certain protections to be added to the legislation. We have submitted written testimony. It's four pages, single-spaced, so I'm not going to read it here today. I'm sure that you will read it. We will. We have worked with the sponsors and will continue to do so. We commend Representatives Hauck and Christopher Nelly for their efforts. Some of our concerns are addressed in the bills as it is, some of them have yet to be, but we will continue to work on it. Some of the major points that concern us are safety, safety for players and their family, safety for officials and referees and groundskeepers and anyone else who has to go to the field or the stadium or the court or the ice to earn their living. As betting gets off the ground, as it increases, as people lose, as bettors are unhappy, we think you should take some steps to protect people from irate bettors. Sports governing body, to the extent the legislation creates such a thing, we think there should be a clear definition of what it does. There should be a representative of the athletes on the sports governing body so that the viewpoints of the athletes can be heard. It should be clear on any investigations that someone connected with the Players' Association should have information as to what the investigations are about so that they can represent their members. Prohibited contact to extent, to the extent the legislation prohibits conduct, it should be clear what conduct is prohibited, what is to be reported to whom. We think it should be clear that players should not be penalized for following the directions of their club or their league, and where possible, this legislation should defer to the collectively bargained terms and agreements between the players and the owners. And finally, the subject of personal biometric data, this is a burgeoning field. There are many devices that collect such data. Players always have concerns that it will be collected unknowingly. This data is and will become, I suspect, very valuable to leagues, to clubs, and, if they can get it, to bettors. It is our position that the athletes should control their own personal biometric data and that you should prohibit in the legislation any use or sale of an athlete's personal biometric data absent specific consent of the athlete. Those are my points. Happy to take any questions you have.
Vice Chair Bailey, you are recognized for inquiry.
Thank you. Hey, good afternoon. So on that biometric data, so the Fourth Amendment would cover that, but are there other states putting that in their state statutes as well? I mean, I'm not opposed to it at all, because I agree.
We've had some success. I can get you the details, perhaps, in a couple of states getting some language in the bills, and are hopeful of getting some in others.
Okay. Valid point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Chipman, you are recognized for inquiry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being here. Would any revenues gained through this for the NHL be considered HRR?
I certainly would think so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from the committee? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony today.
Thank you.
We will move to the next witness in favor of the proposed legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. David Jackson, registered lobbyist here to testify in support on behalf of Sport Radar, which was mentioned by one of the previous witnesses and is a member of Mr. Swain's organization. They cover over 750,000 events annually across 83 different sports and works, you know, as a partner with both the leagues and the operators as part of that process. So we appreciate all the stakeholders trying to work this out and happy to discuss any questions you may have here or offline. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the committee for this witness? Seeing none, thank you. We will move to the next in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Ross Lean with the Missouri Chamber of Commerce and Industry would just like to go on support, on record and support the bill.
Thank you, sir. I always appreciate your testimony. I always appreciate your testimony. Move on to the next in favor.
I don't know that I could be that brief, but I'll try. My name is Sue Schneider. I'm a lifelong resident of St. Charles County and since 1995, I've been monitoring the sports betting and the internet gaming industry and have been involved with putting on uh, conferences, trade shows, publications for that industry. Um, again, I started in seven, in 95 and granted, I was an older woman when I started my company, but uh, I really never thought sports betting would ever be legalized in my lifetime, but I do want to make sure that folks here are aware of what New Jersey uh, was able to do for states' rights in this regard because if it wasn't for the, the legislature, the governor and the, the voters there bringing it, losing it for one time after another until they got to the big dance in the Supreme Court and that was the one that counted. So, um, one of the things that I wanted to mention, I've lived on the Mississippi River uh, for a very long time and, and a lot of people have talked about the, the bleeding over across the river. Uh, we have folks that for about six months of the year, um, will boat over to the Illinois side of the river to, to place their bets. They've already set up accounts and so there are a lot of those folks that are very interested in bringing it home, so um, I did want to mention that. Player protection is probably one of the big keys that I think everybody needs to, to be thinking about and one of the things about coming a little late to the game, uh, if you're to move forward with this, is that there are now a lot of tools, uh, technical, technological tools available for things related to geolocation, age verification, uh, anti-money laundering, you name it, uh, as well as problem gambling. So, I think that that's really important to, uh, to bring up. Missourians, as, as a lot of folks have said, are betting offshore and so i, I think it's important if you're going to move forward with this to develop a viable and competitive system to, to migrate them back. Uh, people have talked about college um, sports betting. It's been done now very successfully in a number of states. Um, there are companies, uh, for example, there's one called US Integrity that, that monitors a lot of databases to try to take a look at that because the integrity issues, um, as one of the previous uh, folks mentioned, is really key. Um, I don't know of anybody in this industry that thinks that taking wagers on high school sports is a good idea, so hopefully we can put that one to rest. Um, one of the things I, I would like to point out is I think as policymakers and lawmakers, it's important to keep flexibility available for your regulators. This is a really fast-changing industry. There are new products, there's new technology that's coming about all the time. So, I think as you look at that, give um, thought to doing a framework that's a basic uh, information and leave, you know, not get too detailed so that your regulators have the opportunity to consider other new products as they come on. And then, um, lastly, I think it's uh, looking at the commercial viability. I, you know, you've been uh, proposed with tax rate that is pretty viable, so you know, I think it's something, because if you want something, uh, an industry that's going to be sustainable, it needs to be something that's not going to be, um, you know, have too many restrictions on it from the standpoint of whether it's taxation or other kinds of regulations. And one last thing I want to bring up, I want to counter Mr. Pready's point of, about cannibalization because if, and I, I'm happy to get you any data, but there are any number of casino folks, particularly in those like in New Jersey and other states, that have a long history with this already, that will tell you that what it's doing is bringing new people, a new population, a younger population into the, into the facility. So, I think that's important. Happy to help you all with any, gathering any information, bringing you some additional experts on various parts of this and uh, thank you for letting me testify.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions from the committee for this witness? Seeing none, thanks again.
Thanks.
Continuing with those in favor. Looky there. Speaking now or forever hold your peace. Uh, we are going to move on to um, those that are here for informational purposes only. Do we have anyone here for informational purposes only? I actually have a, a couple of quick follow-up questions. One, um, for Mr. Sax, is he, did he, I saw him step back, he's back with us. You mentioned about, can you come, go ahead and come back up? Is that? You mentioned about uh, engagement, keeping people engaged, that was one of the things that was discussed and I'm assuming most of that's done through what's called prop bets. And so i, i, in that particular situation, would any sort of limit to prop bets? Do you feel like that that would um, limit that ability to help keep fans engaged or what were you speaking of when you mentioned that?
Uh, more broadly, so you know, you all can work through the details on how the prop bets work. We're talking about just the, the general sense that uh, sports betting gets fans more engaged and, and appreciative of the product, so not really focused on the prop bets.
Thank, thank you. I appreciate that. That was a question that was being asked of me. Um, and um, Mr. Winter, i, can I follow up with you about one thing? Um, there, there is concern, now, how, how many total um, licenses, skins, whatever you want to refer to them as, um, including the teams and the casinos would be offered?
There are 39.
Okay, 39.
There are three per casino property.
Yes.
But casinos are capped at a, at a maximum of six. So, there are two companies that have three properties each.
Properties, instead of having nine, they can only have six.
Correct.
Um, and those, from a geographic region, can you tell us where those properties are
Carruthersville, Cape Girardeau, in the boot heel. Going up to St. Louis, you'd have River City, Hollywood Casino, Lumiere and Ameristar St. Charles. Further north, uh, outside of Hannibal is La Grange, uh, that's Mark Twain Casino. And then you'd go across the state to the west to St. Joe, uh, and then back down to Kansas City, you'd have Riverside, Paris, uh, North Kansas City, KC Casino and Ameristar Kansas City.
You have Booneville.
And Booneville.
Correct.
Booneville, yeah.
Um, and so that's one thing that in this discussion, you have to remember, I'm a far southwest Missouri guy and so I can be to Texas before I can be to any one of the professional sports teams and I can be to Texas before I can be to any one of the Missouri's casinos. That's the truth.
Mm-hmm.
And so with this proposed legislation, um, there's, southwest Missouri has a very high population density. Other parts of the state that don't have a casino presence or don't have a professional sports team presence also have high population densities depending on where they are. It's actually, if I say that, it's, southwest Missouri by far has the highest population density versus not having a professional sports team or a casino presence. Um, with that said, this opens all those people up to vote on the app within the state and that money would be going to people everywhere except southwest Missouri. And so in my home district, in my home region, the question has been asked, I do understand that if a new sports team were to move into the state, that if they met the requirements, that it would then be opened up where they were granted um, one of these licenses. However, from a casino standpoint, there's really no other way um, to be a potential player, to work a relationship with an app unless you are currently written into this bill. Correct me if I'm wrong.
The, the licenses of the casinos are limited to the 13 locations that we have. Correct.
And those locations are in the geographic areas that you'd.
On, on the Missouri and Mississippi rivers.
And there's, there was no discussion in, in those conversations about allowing other entities to potentially be involved in the facilitation of this. I, I, and I'm not, I'm not calling fault on that, I just, I, I want to know if that discussion was had.
I, I'd have to ask one of the parties that were part of the discussion. I was not a part of that discussion. Uh, you know, they, they reached a compromise and then essentially brought it to us to, to help navigate the legislative process.
And this is, this is, but this is as nothing, uh, nothing against the, the, the people that came to the table. As Representative Chipman said, like, fix your stuff at home, I'm, I'm all for that. However, that, that's kind of my job is to ask this question, you know, why? This may sound silly, but the casinos, many of them are not going to have, I understand the, the sports teams, I do, you know, but the casinos, many of them are not going to have a physical presence as Mr. Pready pointed out. And so then it's like, why not Bass Pro Shop? Why not Silver Dollar? Like, I know that that, that sounds nonsensical, but, but the reality is that the only reason that they currently are involved in this conversation is because they're the players that have come to this table. However, opening it up to all of Missouri, you're going to see money being moved around the state and that's of concern. Um, a, and I, I guess with that, is that something that, um, is that something that you as an association would be open, and I don't know if that's been discussed, but open to um, entities that were not involved in those original discussions potentially being allowed to have one of these licenses?
I, I don't know that, I'm not aware of any conversations and some of my members are obviously in the room and I'll follow up with them, but I think the thing to keep in mind is that you want a regulated sports betting environment and so it makes sense to do it through regulated casinos and through the Gaming Commission, uh, rather than bringing in unknown entities that have no experience in sports betting at all.
I'm going to leave it at that right now.
Makes sense.
Yeah, no, it, no, it makes perfect sense.
Okay.
It, it's just, you understand where I'm coming from, being a southwest Missouri guy.
We can talk more offline.
Yeah, and, and so I'm, and once again, nothing against the, the casinos or the, the sports teams for, for coming together and, and making this arrangement. We're just trying to add some equity where we can. So, um, I do appreciate your testimony. Uh, I'm going to make one last call. Is there anybody here that has any in favor, against or for informational purposes only before we adjourn? Seeing, seeing none, I am going to allow um, the bill sponsors to, to have closing testimony if they'd like to say anything.
Appreciate it.
With that said, the Committee on Public Policy is adjourned.